Just so, can you text Anne and see if she's on her way? Can you text Anne and see if she's on her way? Thank you. So we're not sure, I think we should just go ahead and begin, don't you agree?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Steve. I'm ready to go. Assistant Town Manager, ready to begin?
Yes.
Oh, I grabbed this instead of the mallet thing, that's fine. Good evening, I call this October 18th work session of the Morrisville Town Council to order. We have two items on the agenda tonight. We're actually going to talk about TOD first, and then Town Council Roundtable, if it's the wish of the council and there's time. At this time, I'd like to pass the discussion over to Chris Lawson to help facilitate our discussion tonight on the TOD, Transit Oriented Development.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Town Council. I just want to do a little brief before I turn it over to the consultants who are sitting.
Thank you.
First of all, thanks for taking the survey. We can all tell you put a lot of consideration and volunteer answers. They were open-ended answers for questions, which sometimes are difficult to, for me to fill out, but we've got the value of feedback that we needed. Tonight, Nick and Jackie sitting before you with the firm House Levine will lead you through a visual preference survey and seek your feedback to help begin designing the TOD development and zoning plan. Essentially, they're going to lead council through a series of images of developments, and they will ask you to verbally provide your thoughts to each image. The Planning and Zoning Board conducted a similar process last month, and PZB's feedback will also be noted in the presentation. Nick and Jackie will lead the discussion. I'll be taking some notes, but staff will also be here for any questions anyone can be able to answer. I'll just finish before I turn it over, just to say that, you know, we're here tonight for both staff and consultants to hear from Town Council. So I just ask, if you have a thought, please say it, and if you have a question, again, please say it. So I'll turn it over to Nick and Jackie. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for participating or giving us an opportunity to kind of participate in this process with you. As Chris had mentioned, I'm going to go through a presentation. I know you have it in front of you as well. We're going to go through a few different steps, but mainly tonight is kind of a visual preference survey, but we're going to do it live. We're going to do it together, just so we can collect your, your feedback. I'll explain why in a couple of minutes. Before I get started, I just want to give an overview of the process. So real quick, just a reintroduction. So my name's Nick Davis, I'm a principal at House Levine. We're the same team that had prepared the land use plan a few years back, but we have some new members on our team, primarily Jackie, who's going to serve as the project manager. We're going to go through a transition, since there's multiple phases on this project. The upfront side is the design side for the TOD, so that'll be myself and Charlie, who's not here today. But at some point, it's going to switch hands, and we'll get it off to Jackie and her team, and they're really going to focus on the TOD overlay in the districts, so the zoning side. And then, once we get into that aspect, you know, there'll be some touchpoints with our, our teams, so Charlie and myself, but really, that's, that's going to be Jackie's charge. Agenda, so as Chris already mentioned, we're going to go through a planning process overview. We'll, we'll go through this exercise, talk a little bit about what the, the images mean to you, what some of the, the good parts of it are, so the pros, maybe what some of the cons are, and that'll help inform our process, and then we'll just talk a little about next steps. So, real quick, about the planning process. It's a very specific area that we're talking about. So it sets the vision, provides this decision-making framework, establishes an expectation for future investment and redevelopment. But more so, it's tied into this larger planning process. So this larger planning process is Phase One, this does the design typology and redevelopment plan. And that's, that's really what we've been focused on the last couple of months. We did our project kickoff, we're, we're going through some of the, the final stakeholder interviews. You know, we met with PZB, we're meeting with you tonight. Once we have all the feedback that we need, or all the feedback that's been collected up to that point, we want to move into this Step Two, which is the Design Typology Toolkit. Fancy way of saying we're going to start breaking down the design components of a TOD area into more recognizable elements. So we're going to look at the different types of streetscapes and what are appropriate, the different makeup of, of land use programming, you know, what open space could look like, and just trying to get to like a regular rhythm and make sure we're all on the same page. If we're on the same page, then we'll build out this much larger redevelopment plan, the concept, 3D models, that type of stuff. Once we feel like we're in a good position with that Step Three, the redevelopment plan and visualizations, that's when we'll hand it over to Jackie and her team, and they'll start doing the regulatory strategies framework. And so, we use these concept plans and these ideas, these policies, to guide ultimately what your zoning requirements are going to need to be for the site. Could lead to functional subareas that are sub-districts within your overlay, could lead to new dimensional standards or development standards. So a lot, a lot needs to go into this upfront. We need to make sure we're on the same page before we get to that zoning side, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with and know can be, you know, something that you want to make sure you get right when we go through this process. So that's a big part of what we're doing today. Then we switch into Phase Two, and that is TOD zoning districts. So we're, we're 100% out of planning, and we're into what does it mean to have the zoning districts align with what the expectations from the land use plan were, the concept plans that we've developed, expectations from property owners, stakeholders, transit providers, all these different entities, and getting this into the zoning district standards, and then we'll move that through the adoption process. Any questions about that process?
During the process, people can still buy and develop under our current rules, so.
Correct.
Time is of the essence.
Time is, time is one of the major factors in why we're doing what we're doing and how we're breaking this out. We had prepared a scope and a timeline. It's something that we're still working with staff. If we can move faster, we will. I think there's some opportunities, some pinch points in process that we think we could speed up a little bit. But getting through these, these first two steps are, are fairly critical to determining whether or not we can do that as fast as we, we want to. So, go ahead, sorry.
My question, how many acres are we looking at total?
So, in total, there's, there's three different areas. I'm actually going to get to that in a second. But there's three different areas. You're looking at 40 acres, 50 acres, and then about 80 to 90 acres. There are some areas that are already either currently being redeveloped. There are also aspects of that where we know property owners are starting to assemble, and they're getting really close to submitting. So, again, kind of back to your, the mayor's point, time, time is not on our side for some of this, so we do need to be moving.
Partly, please, in all interest.
So currently, now it is zoned as, as TOD. So, what we want to make sure, though, is in the land use plan, and then ultimately, in this updated zoning districts overlay, that it, it meets the expectations of what you're trying to accomplish here. Right now, it may not be in line with what you want to do. So that's a big part of what we're trying to do.
So I, I know you said you talked to property owners. Have you talked to all property owners? Do you know what, what the lay of the land is out there?
Can't say that I've talked to all the property owners. We've talked to quite a few. We've also talked to different stakeholders, so, you know, potential developers, investors in the area. The last couple of weeks, we've really focused in on transit providers, so, you know, talking to people like Go Triangle, or Campo, whoever it might be, just making sure that we know what their plans are too. That's a, that's also a major factor here, is as much as time's not on our side for potential redevelopment, you're also trying to develop TOD up against transit that's not in place. And it may not be in place for, you know, the near future. So that's something we gotta, we have to consider. Is there a specific concern with the, okay?
No, I just want to make sure that, you know, you, you know what, what everyone's interest is out there and how active they are or not, and.
Now, I mailed three letters to all property owners. The third letter, if I hadn't heard back, was a certified letter, that is. They have put from me, I asked them to call me, email me, contact me, any means. We've heard from, at least the long-term homeowners out there, we've heard from them, Mrs. Paul.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so next, next in the process, so this is where we're at, we're in Step One. But very quickly, we can move through Step Two, Three, and Four once we, we kind of close out these initial upfront meetings. All right, project area boundary, so just to your, your point. I don't have the acreages on here, but I can, I can produce that fairly quickly. Yeah, but you can see, so we're, we're looking at three distinct areas. You have the east TOD area, the west, and the south. Now, the east, we know there's some development plans already in place, specifically up in that kind of northeast quadrant. But there's still a lot of opportunity along NC 54, on Chapel, and even where the, the flyover is starting to, you know, or where the alignment of the flyover is. So there's, there's still some property there that we want to make sure the TOD speaks to, the overlay district. And then we're looking at the west and the south. And even though they look similar in size, in terms of what's appropriate in these two different areas, it could be very different. So those are things that we, we plan on exploring as we start to prepare some of our initial concepts, but also as we move into that, that more detailed 3D model. Go ahead, Mayor.
So east is what, I'm, I'm sure that they're making that big building, right? That's already, so that is in line with what our expectations are as the outcome of what we are trying to do here?
We worked with them to try and align it as best we could, but they submitted under the office institutional zoning when that was still in place. So is it what we had envisioned for TOD? No. Is it as bad as it could have been? No. We at least have multi-story buildings, buildings up to the street, parking behind, kind of a, a nice plaza area built in. So there are some good things about the plan, but it is not what we had envisioned.
And then, you take that minus, how much is left out, out of that?
That took up about a third of TOD east. It was a significant chunk, 20-plus acres.
So then, then, from what he's saying, there's still someone now assembling for a second project?
And I think some of those comments might relate to some of the other quadrants as well.
Yeah, more so in the, in the west. Yep.
So I don't think anything is going to change. I was not going to move at all. Pretty much stuck my life.
You've heard of activity in the west quadrant, or potential?
There's potential, yep. Yeah, and so, we only know as much as people want to share as well. I think that's really important. So whether something's as, I guess, time, time pressing is, you know, maybe things are being alluded to, alluded to, you know, we don't know. Either way, though, it's very important that we move forward on getting a plan established and getting your TOD district in line, just so it is what people have to adhere to when they start to move through the process. And I think the, the example of what's happening now in the east, you know, it's not to say that that's not the development that shouldn't be there, but it's not in line with what the land use plan identified. It's not consistent with TOD development, and it, it certainly isn't what we're expecting to see on the west and the south side. So I think just being more prepared and in front of that, and having both the policy document in alignment with your land use plan, but also the zoning code driving, is what we're, what we're really focused on over the next, you know, four to six months.
Sure question for the foundational knowledge. So it's not what we wanted, but it is what we decided upon as a council.
Correct.
How long ago?
That is a good question. I don't know.
Probably was rezoned in the summer of '21, but referring to that exact development, it's been under the zoning code and the zoning map.
So that was a bit dated. Okay. Okay, just wanted to be clear about where we were on that.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, when we brought through all of the McCrimmon amendments, we did also make some amendments to the TOD area, and that's when we also rezoned some of these parcels. If you remember, we knew we weren't getting it exactly where we wanted it, but it was that kind of educated risk assessment, because the life science industry was booming so much. And zoned industrial management life science was allowed on west and south and east. We were a little too slow on east, which is what really happened there. So it was, you know, proactively zoning, so something grossly incompatible didn't happen in the meantime, but it still is not what we wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so the design considerations. We're going to go through a few different things here, but real quick, just what the visual preference survey exercise is about. The intent of this working session is to review and discuss example images of development to gather feedback from the town council. We, we are looking for verbal descriptions of the elements or the images that you like or what you dislike, and how you see this fitting in or not fitting into the Morrisville's TOD area. And then, we'll provide a summarized feedback received during the PZB discussion. It won't be verbatim, but at least to the point where you can get a sentiment of what their challenges or what some of their thoughts were on those sites. But we'll do that after we receive everybody's feedback. So any questions about this exercise before we kind of launch into this? Essentially, we're going to go image by image and just tell us if you, if you like it, if you think it's appropriate, or, you know, tell us why you don't like it. One of the dangers we see with visual preference survey is you don't know why people don't like them. But we're in the room, so we get to hear your thoughts. That's helpful, and we'll take notes as we go through this. So the first thing we want to do is go through the land use pattern, and just get some of your initial thoughts, so be thinking about what's appropriate for TOD. So some of these could be good examples, could be bad examples. You know, this is a single-family detached lane use pattern, so I wouldn't say that this is ideal or conducive TOD. Just want to get the group's thoughts here.
Like the trees scattered around.
And I'd love to see more single-use, more single-family housing here. I don't, I'm not sure this is a place for it, but I do like that.
Yeah, I think it's placement that matters. This is not a TOD, this doesn't scream TOD.
Yeah.
TOD is supposed to be dense.
Yep, okay, same page. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Well, and, and that actually brings up a point, and, you know, maybe I buried the little other when we go through this, but predominantly, the, the land use makeup for residential in, in Morrisville is single-family detached, I mean, for the most part. Now, there are obviously pockets where there's multifamily, and I think it's done well. This is one of your last opportunities where you're going to be able to see that level of density, or you're going to be able to see something that isn't consistent with what, what you're seeing throughout the community. So there is a lot of single-family. This isn't the area that is probably most appropriate. I think that's what we're trying to say.
So, just a last note. One of the things that we had mentioned through the land use planning was that TOD was one of the areas we would consider affordable housing. A lot of that usually means high density, but we could have smaller, single-family homes that were more affordable as well. So I just want to remind the council that I heard a lot of, oh, let's just put it out in TOD. Let's remember, how do we fold that in? This might be one way, but there's other examples coming.
I would just share that on, I prefer this one to the next slide, because I'm used to this pattern and the connectivity. I'm used to having driveways and front doors facing the same way. I don't think in general that this is the right place to have any single-family detached, even though I would really like to see more of that in Morrisville.
Okay, that makes, I, I, I understand. Yeah, so this has, it is kind of intermixed, right? There's alley served, there's front-loaded, the, the mix and scale.
I like the layout of this one, because it breaks it up. And it's not all cookie cutter. I like how there's pink houses, too.
Did you say pink houses?
Yeah, look, there's.
There are a couple in there that are a bit bright.
Yeah, there's almost like, well, I have a pink house, but.
Me too.
There's like four in a row right there.
So this, this picture is just very blah. And I realize it's the time of year.
For sure, yep.
But it, this is not inviting at all. This is just so dark.
And that's a good point. And that, this is where visual preference surveys can be very dangerous, right? Like, I mean, that's a lot of pavement, the color's wrong, it's desaturated, yeah.
This was taken in the winter.
Exactly, exactly.
There's no leaves on the trees, and the grass is brown.
But, but to your point, I mean, there's, there are elements in here where it's very repetitive. It's, the color palette, maybe, maybe it's because of the angle, but that's, that's a fair comment.
So you guys think this is more repetitive than the previous slide?
No, I don't think so.
No, no, I would say that's very repetitive as well, yeah. But the green helps, right? I mean, that makes it easier, it's more palatable.
It's more happy.
Right. Sorry, I'm just telling the truth.
Yeah, no, that's why we're doing this. And like here, this is a bit more, yeah. This is a bit more established, that's why the trees are bigger. These are a bit newer, so they're still smaller.
There's not enough parking for those townhomes either.
Not enough parking?
Right now, nope.
Okay.
Yeah, look at the parking along the, the circle, the arch. It's like, it's driveway, driveway, there's not a lot of parking either.
That all's. And a train.
Yes, yes.
No, totally, that's, yeah, no, totally.
This is the TOD, this is the TOD west, right? We're specifically talking about.
We're talking about all, all areas of TOD. So TOD, east, west, and south.
Right, that's ugly.
Yes.
Too industrialized.
Too much parking.
Yeah, too much parking, too much asphalt.
Okay.
And the parking is all in the front, and I thought we were moving away from that.
Correct.
I'd like to see garages hidden behind buildings, too.
All right, good, good, so here's some.
Parking decks.
Yeah, that looks better.
So, this one, and you, and you have models similar to this, you know, in Park West, where it's internalized. I think the parking here is a bit different in the way that it's internalized. And then you can see, I know it's tough to see in this angle, but like, this is a parking deck. These are multi-story buildings. These are four to five stories, depending on their, their step back. And then you have parking that rings the inside. So from the outside, you know, you're, you're seeing buildings. On the inside, you're seeing parking as part of the circulating area. But then there are decks that support this, and there are surface lots off to the side.
Well, I think you have to have a combination. I, I think you have to have street parking, but I'd like to see a lot of parking decks, too.
Okay.
And hidden like that. That one, that one is also a, no, go to the right, right there, yep.
I, I think that's just a change in pavement.
Okay.
Yeah, these are all at grade. I do think they close this off for events, and that's why it's a different material.
I had my notes that I'd prefer some structured parking as well.
Yeah.
In order to get the density, like the aesthetics of having the parking behind the buildings.
I'd like to see solar panels or greenery on top of those roofs, roofs.
Rooftop gardens.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Rooftop bar.
Rooftop what?
Bar, oh, you know.
Yes, yeah, yes, with, with greenery.
Right, right.
Palm trees.
What's that?
Palm trees.
Yeah, all right, sure.
We've done this zoning standard.
As long as we're dreaming.
One of the comments from the PZB, they noted that there was parking in the center, and then they even, I think someone had recommended having no parking in the center, so that that would be.
Pedestrian friendly.
Maybe more pedestrian friendly, yep.
I can see that. I can see, I mean, I think it would be good to have areas that are more pedestrian-friendly, have designated areas.
But wouldn't a sidewalk.
And also some like town green.
Serve the same purpose.
Yeah, sure. You could have, to, to, yeah, to, to your point, I mean, there could just be wider sidewalks or more dedicated pedestrian paths.
I don't know, we haven't really discussed whether or not this could be a park-and-ride type situation, but we would need more parking decks to support something like that.
Ride where, on what exactly?
People want to come from.
The train station.
Otherwise, and park there and just go to downtown Raleigh or something like that.
Yeah, it's supposed to be transit oriented. Right, but I mean, talking about passenger rail, that's probably going to be years out, though.
Well, that's, we're designing for that now, though, ideally.
I think we have to plan for it.
Yep, yeah, you gotta.
And it could be BRT to begin with, so I, either way, you got to plan for that.
Park-and-ride can also be for carpooling.
All right, so disregard the palm trees, but other than that, the, just the concept here is, this, this is almost a flip. So you have more, more of a pedestrian focus in some of these areas, but the parking, the surface lots are sort of on the offset.
Except for that great big lot out back, I, I'm actually surprised by how much I like this one.
I like the buildings, but it's too much parking.
Yeah, I mean, but, but if you, you, but if you took down those parking lots and put them into a, into a park.
Is that real?
Dead.
It is real. I know, it does look a little photoshopped, but it, no, this is a real development.
Florida or California.
Yeah, it's, well. Yeah, it could be. It, it, this reminds me of a place I've seen in Phoenix, so it's very similar. But again, it's, it's just a very different development type. And kind of to, to your point, I think the next, the next graphic is sort of in the middle. So again, it's a little drab, it's not green. If you can look past that, to me, you know, this is creating a street wall, right? And then there's parking internalized, and this kind of takes it to the next level, is you have this, this great street wall, you know, strong pedestrian corridors. I know that's tough to see, but they put a lot of effort into this area. And then the internalized parking, you know, we're, we're recognizing that parking is important, we need to support it, you know, it's a consideration, but it's not the primary thing I'm going to see from the road, so you're starting this.
First-floor retail?
In some areas, in some areas it is, but not, not all of it. So some of this along this corridor, this is all residential, probably ground floor, you know, use amenities, that type of thing. But you have some opportunities for restaurants, for, you know, service uses. And that, that, that brings up a good point, and we talked about this with the PZB. The intent in the TOD area isn't to see mixed use in every aspect of the development. You know, the last thing we want to do is directly compete with the town center and what's happening down here. But that being said, I, I do think there's opportunities for some ground floor services and retail and, and office-type uses.
It looks like those buildings up there at the top left are townhomes.
Correct, yep.
With the garage there at the bottom.
Yeah, and I think that intermixing is something we'd want to consider. And then you see right across the street, it's, you know, different types of townhomes, a very different style, but, you know, essentially a three-story townhome approach. And then these are more multifamily, you know, this is a multifamily. I think this is a good mix of, you know, just showing the different types of uses in the programs that we'd want to explore, the roadway connections, that type of thing.
I take your point about not competing with the town center, but I think that, that part of the point of having pockets of multi, of high density, you know, I think that they'd be more attractive to people that are going to live there if there was, if there was more first-floor retail. Because, I mean, right now, that's a beautiful walking path. Like, I can see that they put a lot of effort into it, but right now, you're walking around past other apartments. So that doesn't strike me as something that's going to generate a lot of pedestrian, pedestrian traffic.
Okay.
What are those three silos for?
I'm going to guess that those were existing. I, I don't know, that's a good question.
You can open oil refinery.
Yeah, I wonder, a big brewery, I don't know. I, that's a good question. Now I'm kind of interested, I'll try to find out.
If we get those, we're slapping a mirror on them.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Can you go back to the other image before this? I like the fact, I, I'm going to echo what Anne said. I, I do want to see retail in here. I do want to see restaurants and coffee shops, especially when you have a, a passenger rail station. You want to have dry cleaners, you want to have all that stuff, so when you're walking back and forth. So in this one, I love the fact that there's seating, and that looks like a Whole Foods or something.
Yeah, that is right there, yep.
I, I like the idea that there can be restaurant seating outside. I think that's really inviting, and to Anne's point, you, you want to, if you're going to walk, it's nice to walk to something, too, so.
Well, that's it, I think that what would happen in the next picture, I think what you're going to see there is a lot of people hopping in their cars and going to town center, if we went that way, you know, rather than what we really want, which is, you know, walking and biking and, and everything. Because that doesn't look super, like, it, it looks walkable, of course it's walkable, but there's nothing to walk past, and there's nothing to walk to.
Okay.
And, and one, and, and, pardon me, like, just adding to that is, if you have something local, then you're not, you're generating less trips coming out of the complex. You know, if there is some Whole Foods or something, that you don't really have to go somewhere else. It's contained, it'll cut down the trip generations and other things, you know. It's certainly not competing with anyone, but at least, like, I have had a streeter next to my house. I, I never even go anywhere beyond it, because it's just next to me. And I come back, and also the trip generation on Davis Drive has like reduced, or anything. So church streeter is one thing, which is, you've got to be very cognizant, so anything, if you keep inside, the amount of trip generations that will help to keep it, other than like leaving and going for work, would be always good.
Okay, yeah, I mean, these are good, I, maybe, and I might have misspoke. What, what I meant is, it's unlikely in the TOD area that 100% of the ground floor would be set aside for like retail and commercial and services, It's unlikely in the TOD area that a hundred percent of the ground floor would be set aside for like retail and commercial and services. Only because you're, you're increasing the overall market footprint. You're starting to dip into what the town center is going to be producing. Like that's, it is a direct competitor at that point. That said, it's, it's not to say that you won't, and you would. I mean, I would think that you would have commercials. You'd have some coffee shops or restaurants or service uses. It just might not be, and it wouldn't be required in a TOD to be a hundred percent of the ground floor. Now, if you feel otherwise, we can certainly explore that. It's just, it's, it's how much market is there? Um, and what are you, what are you doing in terms of your impacts to the town center? Just something to think about.
Well, and I've thought about this too, because it ends up being, um, you know, what they're developing in RTP for the hub. I mean, what they're developing there is essentially like a town center. And then, um. What we just got done talking about, you have Park West, uh, that can end up being. Like a town center as well. I, I have wondered between our town center, the TOD. The hub, Park West, you know, is there enough of a demand?
And we're talking about a lot of residential here too. I mean, it's something to think about.
To me, you're building in demand, like anytime you surround any business with, you know, six giant apartment buildings. I think you're building in a certain amount of demand.
Yeah.
Yep, that's true.
You're, you're building in the users. And then that's absolutely true. Um, but it's just, again, I would, I would, as we go through this. And we can provide other examples, but as we go through this, TOD typically doesn't mean a hundred percent mixed use. That, that was, that was really what I said. And then when I think about like walking around, I hear what you're saying, but it's, it's very similar to walking around a single family neighborhood. I mean, it's, you walk around for different reasons. Um, so if your experience that you want is to walk around a more vibrant, you know. Commercially driven retail center, I think the hope is that you would probably go to your downtown. If you're looking for something where you might be able to grab a cup of coffee or get a bite to eat, but it's in a more localized level, the TOD should provide that. So it's a balance. I mean, I, I agree.
Are you factoring in um, any impact from this being right up against weight tech RTP?
Uh, that's a good point, especially TOD East. I mean, your proximity to that, it's, it's very walkable.
I think we should strongly consider a small footprint grocery store.
I agree, yeah.
Because um, it helps with grant opportunities for affordable housing as well as the residents that live there. They'll be able to shop on site.
Yeah.
So that would be a really positive thing.
And that's something that's hard to find in a town center, but it, you might have the space and you would have the user base for, for many reasons. This, this could be an area that's more appropriate than a town center to get a fifteen to twenty thousand square foot smaller grocery store footprint.
So are we? So I know we're going to have the flyover McCrimmon over Chapel Hill Road. Will we have a pedestrian bridge or will part of that flyover be?
Alright, I want to make sure. I don't miss the. Like just a sidewalk, yeah.
There's um, a bike path, kind of a multi-use path.
I remember that coming up in the conversations.
I just want to make sure nothing's changed since we, but yeah, last I, I heard, there is a connection along the, the flyover for pedestrians.
They initially start, but they die out pretty soon. We could have seen that in many California subdivisions when they have like high end.
I know, I know. Amazon tries and starts and stops.
And then it basically dies out and you have like an empty thing.
It, but it does depend on your format. It, it depends on what you're trying to do. If you're doing like the fast casual or the, the ready-made meals. The prep meals, pre-cut fruit. I mean, to me, it's shocking that people spend seven dollars on pre-cut fruit, but they do. Uh, and the margins are there. So it, it does depend on what you're selling. Uh, but you're right, it's not, it's not your traditional grocery. If you're trying to do a traditional grocery, you're going to lose. Uh, yeah, for sure.
Well, it can't compete with some of our larger ones, but a specialty one. Would be good. That way, when you get off the bus or the train, you could have a, a quick meal.
Exactly. Yep, exactly. Okay.
So I, I just want to share a little bit about that too. I think that, I'm thinking of the TOD as being essentially another town center and another destination.
Okay.
Cause there's a lot of apartments that part of town, there's RTP, it's right off five forty. So people coming from the north and west as well, not just people coming on our greenways to our town center. So I'm less fearful of stealing and cannibalizing. Already town center is pretty close to Park West. So they're competing, but I think there's enough market, especially as there's growth to our west and carry. That it'll support essentially another downtown.
Okay.
Um, so that's my thought about this. And I look at this one and I see the left side and it reminds me a lot of phase two of our town center, actually. Cause we're having higher buildings with retail on the bottom, sort of going down towards Church Street. So that's my, what I was envisioning for that. So I thought that was interesting, how this is kind of similar in that way. Um, would love to see some wrapped. Parking decks.
Okay.
In the back of those.
I mean, really, they could be complementary rather than competing, you know, if town center is full of. Family-friendly stores and activities and fun stuff to do. And then, you know, this is full of. Grocery, a grocery store and a dry cleaner and all the stuff you need when you're trying to, you know, just. Be single and fun in a city-type situation. I mean, you know, I think that that's complementary uses. I don't think, I don't think we should really get wrapped around the axle of what kind of businesses are going to go, are going to go in there. Cause I think honestly, the market will sort that out.
I think these are three very unique areas and they each are going to have their own unique identity. And I'm, I'm not concerned, quite frankly. This area too, and I, I, when I think about TOD, I focus a lot on the west side. I have to remember there's two other parcels, but. Um, we have thousands of people that live up and down Church Street that don't have an easy access to anything. Anything, not a grocery store, not a drugstore, not a, um, because of what they did, what DOT did. Uh, at, at Church Street by closing off the, the access to Chapel Hills. So, um. This, this can be where they go to get their coffee and have whatever. Um, so I, I. I think this can be really, the west side can be a, a great amenity, if that's the right word. The amenity is not the word, but you know, have, have.
But this is kind of the right word.
For, for the residents that are here now, and then of course the ones that are going to come.
They're not going to go to downtown.
Yeah, no, but downtown will have a whole different.
The market is there for everyone.
I totally agree. Um, I.
We have a lot of people that are going to be living in Morse.
I know we're talking, it, it might feel like we're splitting hairs, but we're not. And it is important to. Articulate some of these nuances, because when we do get in, when we do the concept plans and the visualizations, they're pretty high levels. We're not getting detailed in like floor plates and what's happening inside. But when we get to the zoning aspect. Yeah, I know, I know, I know. But, but to, to Jackie's, maybe from Jackie's perspective, and she probably wants to chime in here, is. Um, you do want to make sure that you're accommodating and allowing these uses. And, and sometimes in a TOD. There are TOD districts that would restrict certain uses or it would be conditional, whatever it might be. Um, and you may want to just make sure that this TOD allows for and accommodates the types of uses that maybe traditionally wouldn't be. Because it's just a different type of TOD. And that's why we need to do these types of land use programs first. Make sure we're all on the same page. So you do get a code that fits the expectations of, of your group. Um, but also that PCB is aware, like this is the intent, this is why we're doing this, this is what the community has bought into, that type of thing. So. This is helpful.
There's something else to consider with regards to transit when, um. Whatever the group was, had that presentation and talking about the stop here in Mooresville. They were alluding to that that stop would end up being where people would get off to go to the airport. Like grab a bus.
I would think it's possible.
Cause the, you know, if they do that rail line, that's as close as you're going to get to the airport. Um, so we may have people coming, this is like, we'll probably be dead, but, um.
Station, add a bus station too?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's going to be years, decades in the future. Yeah, but there's going to be other people coming in to get to the airport. And people coming from the airport to go.
Yeah, but the thing is, I mean, we want to be a forward-thinking council. We don't want to be the council that the people twenty years from now are cussing us. Because we didn't think of these things.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
So these are close, these are close to.
We will be dead.
These are close to some of the comments from PCB. Some of their comments were, you know, we're closer to the look that we're going for, you know, um. Not sure how much of this is mixed use. They think there should be more mixed use. Do we consider underground parking? So we didn't, obviously we didn't do this, but. Um, that is something that could be explored. I think underground parking, garage, uh, whatever it might be, you're going to need to explore taking surface parking offline. Just to optimize space, but that comes at a big cost. Uh, and that's something that we'll, we'll need to consider. Um, this could bring a lot of traffic. I mean, you look at this and the, the traffic impact, even if it is TOD, that's going to come with traffic. Uh, just inherently with bringing this many users in. Um, you know, how? How could you support retail just because there isn't enough parking or the parking's not, you know, maybe. Situated in a way where it's easy to get to or clear on how to get to it. So those are all, those are all really good considerations. So as we go through this. You know, if we are exploring a, a grocery store, you know, even though that would serve the people who live in the TOD, it would also serve a larger area. Needs to be easy to get to, easy to access, that type of thing.
I, just to, just to point on this being the look that we're going for. I don't necessarily hate this look. But I really would like to see more, like, I would really like to see more use made of the rooftops. You know, solar panels, community gardens, um, it's. Like rooftop restaurants.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I, I, because this to me, I mean, it's fine. I'm not going to be looking at it from overhead all that often, but. But I do think that, you know, I think that we, we're tearing up a lot of green here. And I think that we should really be thinking about that. And, and the sustainability footprint of the development. And the sustainability footprint of the finished product, I think we should, that we should pay attention to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the, the buildings may be good here, but you look at that, how much it's all covered in asphalt. Or building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't see twenty percent tree preservation there.
No, no.
I don't see green. I don't see a green median on the roadway.
See any lawn.
Yeah, right. That's one thing.
So I'm going to tell you, I don't, I don't like these buildings at all.
I don't either. I agree.
These are ho-hum. I, I, if you were down on the street, this would look like anywhere. And that's not what I want to see here. And I sent, I don't know who, who did the survey, but I sent you a link to Burke Dale Village.
Yes.
If you go out on Google Maps and put yourself down and walk the street, that is exactly what I want to see.
Okay.
It is not this at all. It's trees up and down the street. It's a landscape median down the middle that has. Um, gathering places. It has different facades on all the buildings. It's, there, there, there's turrets. And there's round at the corners, it's round. And this just looks like every other apartment complex you have to see, see anywhere.
Yeah, I thought of, um, I spent three months in the Czech Republic. And there were still like a lot of the communist-type uh, tenements there. And that's what this reminds me of.
I would tell you this is not what I want.
Okay. Alright, now this is more about build form, less about the architecture, but I, I know that's hard to divorce when we. That's okay. Yeah, no, that's okay. Uh, and I, I will, um, acknowledge too, we, we received everybody's comments. That's not incorporated into this presentation, um, because we were trying to give you the same presentation we gave PCB. Uh, but we will, we will take all the different locations that you've identified and look at those as good, you know, just examples. Or this is the direction that we want to go. So that would be really helpful.
You also mentioned Burke Dale Village as an example.
So you, it was Burke Dale Village?
Burke Dale Village, it's in. B I R K, D A L E.
It's in, I think, like, there is a slide at the end.
Been there too. It is beautiful. And it, when you, when you drive in the main entrance, it leads to the back to a, it's actually a movie theater. But I could see that being a train station. I could absolutely, and there's, there's restaurants all up and down and there's wide sidewalks. And, um, there's seating all over the place. It is, you take that and plop it here and I'd be happy.
So you'll need to help us decide about how much amenities and sidewalks versus the density. And the tree preservation and where the balance is there. Cause I think we all want those wide sidewalks and restaurant seating outside. But does that cut into our ability to have a true TOD? That's transit-oriented development.
Yeah, and some of the, the challenges too, I mean, the, the tree preservation side, where those trees are currently located. Are those the, the best trees in terms of what you're trying to preserve? Should they be putting in a different park or open space that accommodates? And kind of replaces those trees. I mean, those are challenges that we'll, we'll have to figure out as we go through this process. Alright, so the next thing we want to go through is build form. Um, so now we're starting to look at, I'm sorry, so this is kind of the build form, but also getting a little bit into style. So we can talk a bit about, uh, a little bit about that. So. Group's feeling on this type of architecture, this type of style.
I like the color.
I think it's more interesting than what we tend to see in townhouses.
Yeah.
Good variety of color. I. The carpenter village down the street.
Oh, yeah.
Is that for single-family homes only, or is, because these are commercial technically? Are we allowed to have aesthetic features for townhomes?
Townhomes are, um, defined as a single, one or two family, so they would fall under that one sixty D restriction.
Yeah, so it's exactly, so you can't restrict anything, you can't put the colors.
But apartments are.
Exactly. So you can't have design standards for apartments.
I knew there was one and another.
For multifamily and.
We can add incentives for color variety.
But I think you could also, like, I think one of the reasons why a lot of people like the, um. The shopping center with the palm trees was because of the color. It's like, if, if. It, it, it's like separated, almost like townhomes and they're different colors.
Yeah, yeah, like the facade penetration.
Yeah, so you could, you could employ the, the color scheme and the facade. To the commercial space, right?
Yeah, I mean, you can do, so we can, you can, inside the code, you could break it up where the facade would have to be articulated in a way. So step back, you could have different material, that type of thing. Not, not for single-family attached over tunnel, but you can do that for multifamily and commercial.
So I like the variety. At least it's not flat. There's, it's changing a little. There's different angles and.
Yeah.
Now PCB, some of the comments that they had were, um, they didn't like the gable roof. They were looking for maybe more like the flat roof or brownstone style, like a Brooklyn brownstone, that type of thing.
Wasn't it just one guy that didn't like the gable roof?
Uh, I think a few people made that comment. It wasn't urban, yep, exactly.
Well, I like gable roof.
So the gables don't lend themselves to gardens.
Well, true, but it'd only be one section.
The gables do lend themselves to solar panels, so sometimes there are trade-offs.
Right.
Um, so slightly more dense, so we're starting to move into the apartments where you can start to. Put more restrictions or requirements on, on what it should or needs to look like.
So, so we know we put the restriction, like after the second floor, there has to be kind of this. Question, remember, always step back, those kind of things to create an ambience.
You can do that, yeah, yep.
Another way is let's strike.
It's a lot like Park West.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
A lot like Grace Park is what I was just saying.
They're very nice, but I don't know. Need to do better.
I'm saying the balconies are important for the residents.
I think this surely looks better than what we have, like a broad stone trailside.
Well, okay, but is that really where the bar is?
Well, it is in Mooresville. I mean, have you looked at, well, I'll go down. I, I've noticed that like all our apartments, like the ones in McCrimmon and, um. Aviation, those are just all brown. But as soon as you go over the line into Durham County. You get apartments just like this. Yes, the Alta ones. They are much more urban, contemporary looking than.
Alta Ren.
I don't find this to be particularly urban looking.
Well, but it's, it's, it's got an urban flair to it, you know? Yeah, it's got a little, it's kind of like an arts and crafts style that seems to kind of be employed with department buildings lately.
I don't know if this would be as affordable. It just depends.
Feels more like our town center feel. I'm thinking our TOD is going to be a little bit more edgy, a little more urban. But that's just what I'm envisioning. I'm not sure if they'll be different in that way or not. But I see this as being like phase one. Or a town center, especially the one before this, facing Jeremiah. Um, or number three, the next one, which is brick, which matched Jeremiah.
These are similar comments to the PCB. I mean, this could be a development anywhere in the area, the single-family. Um, image before, same thing, it's, you know, they, they're fine. I mean, they're, they're okay, they're good. Maybe not what we want to see in the, in the TOD area. So I think that's, sounds like we're on the same page.
I'd certainly rather see that than what we have currently for apartments.
Um, this one more for the scale. I mean, you're starting to see like a four-story, it's a walk-up. And that's a two-over, sorry, I keep saying walk-up, two-over-two, yeah.
What is, I'm sorry, what does two over two mean? That means someone has the first and the second floor as one unit?
That means someone has the first and the second floor as one unit and then another. Third and fourth floor. I actually would want a two over two.
I like these.
I like that.
It's great space. You can get a really large unit that way.
I love stairs, how do you get?
Yeah, you have, it has stairs.
So right, right here.
Two entrances, right?
You step in and like one is that entry and then you probably walk up.
Walk up, two flights of stairs.
Yeah.
So I love brick and I love stone, but this.
That's gonna be very expensive.
It needs a little more, it just, this kind of comes across as flat-looking, and maybe it's just because of the picture.
No, you're right, yeah.
What if it was painted white?
Or brick. It was painted white and one was the original brick. Wait, wait a minute, how do you make these ADA compliant if there's, if there's two flights of stairs to get up into the top apartment?
I don't know if this one would have been.
You, I don't think it needs to be.
I don't think it is, I don't think it.
Are you familiar with those?
Uh, no.
Yeah, have you guys seen these townhomes in Cary? They're kind of hidden, I mean.
Oh, those are nice, yeah, well, that's urban-y.
Yeah, those are brick and they're painted white, but because of the fixtures.
Those are million-dollar ones?
Yeah, of course, they're nine, nine hundred thousand dollars.
Affordability just went out the door. But you could.
Just wait a bit, it'll be affordable.
The market is gonna push some of this really high.
Yeah.
That's gonna be beyond us.
I mean, but you could use the same style for apartments.
Yeah.
Brick, the brick tends to raise the price.
Did you say that?
There's gorgeous.
I mean, the thing is though, have we seen anything that would be, that would lend itself to affordable housing? I mean, I, I think even in the TOD, I feel like rents, I feel like rents there are going to be high.
There are ways that in the zoning, so the state doesn't allow municipalities to require affordable housing, but there are ways we can incentivize it. Density bonuses or other types of things that would encourage people to.
And I, I think we have to do that, I, 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 you know, we've talked about this before, about, um, how important affordable housing is, but that it needs to be incorporated in all development.
Right.
It, it, and so.
It should not be a stigma.
That's right, so, you know, that's a hundred percent.
What do you guys think about the, how a lot of the affordable housing ends up, it's only for ten years?
It could depend on the way that you, um, we structure the incentives, uh, within the, the zoning ordinance, so it could be uh, deed-restricted affordable for ten years. Um, it could be a requirement based on the amount of bonus that you receive or the amount of incentive uh, that you trigger, it has to be for a longer period of time or a lesser period of time, so we could structure it in a way, um, that, that brings that benefit to the community for whatever time you think might be appropriate.
How does the developers take that?
I'm sorry?
How does the developers, uh, take that? Because most of them we have done right now are all ten years.
Yeah.
So, so if they say, like, the gate twenty-five years, will they push back?
It would of course depend on the level of incentive, right? So if we're saying, uh, you can go up to four stories, uh, five stories for a five-year affordable, six stories ten-year affordable, seven stories, you know, so we can get it to a point where it makes their, uh, numbers work, um, and it makes sense to be affordable to that level. Um, exactly what that would need to be to ma, to make, um, everything work, we'd have to, to kind of figure out and kind of work through. Um, so there may be pushback unless those incentives are really enough.
And if we're asking them to do parking decks too, that makes it a lot more difficult to do much of anything.
Right, that's right.
This reminds me of Princeton. I really like, I mean, I like this look, to me, this is a, this is a nice, like a nice trade-off between true urban styling and, you know, a nice look, we're, you know, we're still a small town. I like this as kind of a middle road.
Yeah, I like this better to myself, of the examples we've seen so far.
Yeah, PZB had similar comments, uh, prefer the no balconies, broken-up wall facades, height differences, different buildings, different colors. Some didn't like the parallel parking.
Yeah, I can understand.
Thank you so much.
You have to have a little bit of everything for everybody. I like this too.
Yeah, this is a bit, a bit more modern, yeah. Some, there's some real sharp edges here, it looks nice.
Are those open windows or what are those things jutting on?
So those are awnings, like sun awnings, yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, they could, they could be, yeah.
I was actually wondering if they might be solar panels.
Yeah, but this is a good example, I, this has a really nice street heat as well, so this is downtown Bentonville.
This looks like the kind of place that would have a rooftop garden. I, it really does.
So, so my question is, we're seeing that so many models, like you're showing, uh, that's, uh, so are we going to settle on one, saying this is how it has to be, and the developer will come and say, you know what, I don't like this, I don't wanna change. How does it work? Because I'm just curious, because they'll do what is conducive to them, and they may completely change what we are putting restrictions, other than like the parking on the front, the back. Those are standard ones, but the looks, and is that the goal towards the end? Like, this is a look that we want, because I think you'll get a lot of pushback from whoever is trying to build it.
Sure, um, so the goal isn't towards the end of the, the concept plan, or even when we're in zoning, to one hundred percent nail down, like, it has to look like this one, or, you know, it has to visually look like this, but we can start to get to the things that we like, right? We like that this facade is broken up, you know, consistently, so even though this might be one development, it looks like four different buildings. Uh, you know, we, we like these materials, but how they choose to use those materials, that's gonna go up against, you know, the process. As you're reviewing it, you get to provide some input, you could have example images, I think that would be helpful. Um, but yeah, we're not zeroing in on like, if you're not using this brick, you know, it doesn't meet our criteria. I do think you wanna allow a little bit of flexibility for developers and builders. Um, but let's, let's get them into a box that we're comfortable with, and then they can be flexible from in there.
And it seems like a lot of times, if you give them some flexibility, they actually come back with something that I like better than what I would envision, you know?
I, I, we agree, I mean, one of the things that we say is, you know, typically towns aren't building their cities, right? They're not building these developments, these developers, the builders, they, they do this. Um, and I think with the right incentives and a clear direction, it makes it a lot easier for the right person to come in and say, you know, we do this, we do it well, this is what we recommend. Sure.
As part of the TOD, I know I spotted that, we build all the infrastructure for them and all those things. Are we expecting the same thing in these theories, or they are doing their own infrastructure? The road infrastructure and other things, because that, that he does pretty good on downtown with the cost and everything.
Um, I don't think that we've a hundred percent settled on what that approach is, but there would be and could be some components that a, a town might be responsible for. Um, but depending on how it gets developed, I mean, a lot of that could be put back to the developer. So in terms of like the roadway infrastructure that you put in place for the town center, if there's specific roads that you're looking to, um, build out through there, uh, that might be something the town might be liable for or might be responsible for, but we haven't gotten to that point yet. I, I've seen it go both ways, and it depends on how much you wanna put into that road. I mean, if you're requiring, um, something as simple as this, it might be something that's part of the developer's program. If you're looking for something more complex, or you're building in some of the BRT components, there might be some kind of share between the two.
Yeah, that's an important point, because we don't just want, don't want to get caught into the hidden costs of what we are asking, and then later, you know, stock selling money for every TOD area.
So I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, I think, as you were going into this, that most of the development is being handled by private developers, but we're keeping private, public-private partnership, if we think it's that.
So, you know, in that, the, we were talking about it earlier, in the TOD East, we're already gonna get that development that is lab space and office space. What is to prevent other developers coming in there? And it'll still be allowed, and this, what this is, uh, our zoning, isn't it? What if they come in and they put in more lab space, which seems to be the trend now?
You mean in the TOD area?
Mm-hmm.
So the goal of this process is, by the time we're done, that wouldn't be a use or a program that would be allowed by your code.
So are we gonna, are we not gonna allow any more lab space in that?
In the TOD, in the TOD. And, and if we do allow for it, maybe it needs to be accommodated into these built, built forms more than what they, they are now. So it would be a very different, yeah, it would be very different than what you might allow over in the McCrimmon's extension.
Yeah, I mean, we know we're gonna have tons of lab space over there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because the, the outside of the building can look one way, or any way, and then the use inside could be a lab.
It could be, yeah, I mean, those are things that we can, again, we could explore. Yeah, that was one of the comments that came back, and I, I don't recall what slide it was on, but that was a comment from the PZB is, are we accommodating office space in this area, but not, not office space in its traditional sense? So some of the ground floor, maybe for this building, you know, what's, what's against the rail? Should be, uh, glazed pizza, because it's delicious and it has a good restaurant. Um, maybe down the road, it's a coffee shop, but what's a little further down, uh, this other way, along east, could be, could be a life science facility, it could be an office space, could be, could be something that you, you typically wouldn't see in a more traditional downtown, but would be very advantageous with its proximity to the BRT and commuter rail.
Yeah.
I like the facade on this, this building.
I like the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just like the color and how it's broken up.
Okay. I liked one of the phrases the mayor used, I mean, is this more edgy? I don't know if edgy, I like that though, I mean, you have an opportunity to do something that you may not have done anywhere else in, in Mooresville, just because it's so distinct to this area. So to me, when I, I, when you say that, this is the kind of architecture, it's a little more playful or fun, I mean, you can just try different materials, different, different site design.
Not as drab.
Not as drab, yeah.
This one comes with tracks.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Hey, you guys said this was in Charlotte, right?
I believe this is in Charlotte, yeah.
You can tell, if you zoom in on the street sign, you can see the crown.
Oh, nice.
So their, their commuter rail is electric?
Electric, yeah. I like Charlotte.
They have a light rail system.
Yeah.
There's a lot of cool development in Charlotte, actually, there's like, there's a whole bunch of, like, pocket neighborhoods that are, that I would love to see here. Yeah.
Really.
Okay.
I always think of that as being the best, you know, best transportation development.
You've done a nice job.
But also probably one of the most expensive to live in, I'm just putting that out there.
Uptown.
Which one, which area?
Just the uptown area. Yeah, the light rail man.
I haven't been to Charlotte in years. They've expanded the light rail too.
How about this image?
That looks like Grace Park, the buildings.
But the greens is good, like.
That was a comment from the PZB, I think the one of the original, or one of the first ones, same thing, it looks very similar to Grace Park.
Mm-hmm.
You can keep a brewery in the middle and.
But I do like the, like, I, I mean, all right, it, it does look like Grace Park, but the, the open space with the seating and the.
Yeah, Grace Park doesn't have that.
They definitely don't have that, but I mean, but I like that, I think that's, you know, it's not a ton of space there that they've designated for that, but there's a couple of restaurants, and then you, you know, and there's a couple seating areas, and I think that's just a, that's just a nice use of space.
Yeah, that's how like the Lafayette Village is off of. Yeah.
One, that's in Italy, Italy.
Lafayette Village and.
That's beautiful.
Where's Lafayette Village?
Uh, I think also, also can go to the right and right. That's really nice. That's, that's top-notch.
Really?
Yeah, it's really nice.
Can you, what is it again?
Lafayette, Lafayette Village. Chris, Chris is half a, and then.
Is that true?
I hear.
I knew what he said. Would they have stuff like this, like open areas?
Well, they have like a big green area and then that, what?
You can Google if you want to Lafayette Village.
I don't know, I can't really see with it.
I've never been there.
They have a nice Italian restaurant, they're simply crepes.
And you walk in between like.
Yeah, they have a green space in the middle of it.
An underground park.
Yeah, and whether, whether it's, you know, turf or, uh, live grass, whatever it might be, I do think.
But that's AstroTurf, isn't it?
That is AstroTurf, yeah.
See, there's something higher than you like, something is Lafayette Village.
I like the simple crepes.
I like a lot of benches too, so people can gather and.
Yeah, I like that.
Have lunch, hang out.
I wish, I wish Grace Park had that.
There's still space, that guy can sell, there's still space.
Yeah, they don't, there's that whole gre, green space that he does nothing with.
That's cute, I like that.
There's a fight between the Grace Park and that open.
Oh, really?
That's the reason.
That looks like a place on Cape Town that I've seen, to do that project.
One of the wall rings opposite to that, on this side.
Oh.
Get out of here.
I, I was looking at my notes and I said that I don't really like four, five and six that much in this, um, part that we're doing, like, fi, four and five are a little bit too old-school, I think, I'm looking for something a little more edgy. Six was just a little bit, kind of, almost Brady Bunchy to me. It's like edgy, but in retro, rather than forward-looking. Um, I like this one a lot, I'm not sure how much I like the buildings, I think I really like the front space, all the green and the benches.
Okay.
That's what I really like about this one. And the next one I think is nice and edgy, but I think part of that is because it's really well-taken picture.
Yes, yes.
It makes you feel good, it makes you wanna be there.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's a little bit.
It's cheating.
It's cheating a little bit. It looks like DPAC on the right, um, a nice green area there, so this.
Where is this?
Uh, you know, we were trying to figure out, it's funny, because it's called West Park on the side there, so it's the upside-down. Um, I don't know, I mean, we, I could find out though.
I like all the landscaping.
Yeah.
But you're, you're right, the lighting, I mean, it's the magic hour, it's like a perfect time to take a photo. Uh, but I, I do think, I, I do think the facade articulation, it does look like Photoshop. Um, the facade articulation, the materials, I think this is a great use of traditional materials in a non-traditional way. Um, they, it looks, it's very nice.
I like the balconies, I like, yeah, I like the facade, I like the glass.
It's not Photoshop.
Oh, look at that red light, how did it come in the middle?
This, this right here, it's, it's a long exposure, yeah, so, um, I promise, because if it was Photoshop, I would have put leaves on these trees, so.
I like the decorative street lighting too.
So this is the feel that I want.
Okay, yeah.
So seven and eight are kind of.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and I think these are traditional materials using a, a not necessarily traditional way, so I think that's a good. The other one, we had talked about with PZB a couple different times, just about general, general across-the-board safety. So, you know, if you're gonna have a lot more glass and exposure for parking decks, you know, making it more comfortable for people to go to the park and move through the spaces, I think this does a really good job of balancing that. And then the last one, maybe second to last one. Uh, go ahead, go ahead.
Just gonna say this is ugly.
Okay, yeah. Uh, so this, yeah, just different types of materials, so n, definitely no brick, nothing traditional here.
But you could have a garden or a rooftop.
Right, yeah, yeah, and so right down the road, this is actually in Lawrence, Kansas, right down the road is a very traditional, more recent, I mean, these, they actually came on fairly close together, but just different interpretations, so same build form, um, you know, same types of users, just a very different architecture.
Down on the left, it looks like four and five from earlier in this, and this, the main part just, I made a note, it just got too much going on.
Yeah, okay.
It's like almost too busy.
It's overdesigned.
Yeah.
I think these are fads, I'm, 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 fingers crossed, I hope.
Fads?
Yeah, just that style, I don't know, that'll age well, but.
That's a good point, something does age well.
Does that have a name, the style?
That style, I don't know, I'm sure it does, um, it's probably not a nice name though. Okay, and then the la, the last one, so, you know, getting into, uh, a much larger scale than, than anything that, you know, you're currently seeing. Uh, but, you know, this is a more traditional built-up, um.
I don't think we can go that high.
I don't want to.
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna say that.
What was it, fifty fifty feet?
We can, I thought it was five.
This is too much.
Does staff have clarification about how high we are allowed to go? Sixty feet?
You can exceed that number, but you you would need to have a discussion with. Yeah.
Yeah.
And and I would say we're, so part of what we're doing is, we'll set the height, I mean, we can negotiate that, go either way, so. If there wasn't a fifty foot restriction, does that make this a more palatable building, or is it still, you know, too small, too big?
So what's, what's the downside if we make it more taller? More density, it's more density, yeah, and less, less buildings too, you know.
Yeah, I think for this area, I don't have an issue with there being more stories. My issue with this is just the facade is.
Yeah, that's a difference.
It's not very.
I don't necessarily have an issue with more stories, but what I don't want is, like, because if we have more stories, that's fine. And we could fit more people in a smaller amount of space, but what I don't want is six buildings that are all seven stories. Because we went, you know, cause we let them go seven stories, and then we still don't have. Green space or whatever we would have gotten by putting the buildings, by making the buildings taller. To accommodate a number of people that the developer could live with, and you know, if if we do that, if we allow extra stories. I at least wanna get like some green space around the area.
I agree with that.
I I just recently, I don't know if anybody's been to Vancouver, British Columbia, the way they do architecture there is fascinating because. They have very tall buildings throughout the the different districts, but they'll do, so if it was a block like this, they'd have two tall buildings. On the corners, but in the center would be open space, plaza space, park space, they incentivize the development to go tall. But they they make you set aside a certain percentage for open space. It's it's, it's very attractive, and it just, it's a different skyline, it's very cool, um.
Yeah, but you got to ask how much we can go, you know, but I should, we should take as much. I would say in this area, go vertical as much as possible, because. Advantage is for us to have more green space.
Yeah, and that's what they'll do here, is, you know, this is a very tall building, so I'm I'm not saying it has to be this tall, I think this is ten or twelve stories. Um, but they'll have a a massive open space between then the next building. And so you're, you're kind of that trade off, do you want four, six story buildings, or do you want two, you know, twelve story buildings? Or twelve, or two, you know, ten sort of, whatever it might be, uh, just a consideration, and then you you maximize open space on the ground.
Like I said, though, as long as we don't, as long as we don't get taller, all right next to each other.
Yeah.
Then, because then all you do is pack in more people and we're not getting anything.
And I think it could be a, I'm picturing a blend, you know, what might be like the downtown main street, the TOD main street. Could feel more like this. But then right behind this could be taller buildings, so as you're walking this space, you know, just per perception and street wall and just urban design principles, you don't see it.
All about all buildings is because Kerry, their their future plan on fifty five. I've heard that they are all going vertical around the fifty five, big time vertical. So I think we have to use, we don't have land, and where we get a chance, and if FAA allows it. Go vertical more as much as possible.
I just, this is the spot, if you're gonna do it anywhere, this is, these are the, the TOD area is the most appropriate for so many reasons. Um, and then you just, you stay out of the other residential districts with this kind of development, okay?
So my notes about this, that one just looks sterile, so if you have examples of buildings that tall that are more interesting or edgy. I'd be interested, uh, wrapping that around a parking deck would also be nice.
Okay.
Cause that's a lot of parking.
M- my guess is, and I only know this from this site, I know this parking deck serves it. But the backside of this building also incorporates a deck, but it's obviously, I didn't take that photo, this is a very sterile photo, it's still in construction.
So Kerry's going up to twenty stories.
Twenty, okay.
Uh, well, this'll be close enough to five forty that we'll sort of have a skyline from Morrisville, which would be interesting. So what do we want people as they drive by to see? Um, I think it might be kinda neat to have a couple of tall buildings.
Yes.
Um, possibly.
Yeah.
I agree.
Maybe we should get Kirk and like.
Something iconic would be nice, we don't have that in Morrisville.
Alright, so now we're moving into the roads and intersections, so we're getting a little bit more, oh, I was gonna say street level, and I didn't mean to. Um, getting, but getting down to the kind of ground level, looking at the different components, so how do roads and intersections start to interplay in the site? So not so much the building, we're looking at the the decorative um paving for the intersection.
I like the. You can see the crosswalk, the crosswalk, you know, I'm assuming that's brick, but um. I like that the crosswalk is more defined, not just two white lines. Although I do remember once we had somebody come from AARP when I, it was during one of the tran- transportation plan updates we did. And he talked about um being careful about the use of pavement. Because um it was difficult for older folks. Yeah, he was talking, he he was, you know, cobblestone, you know, like, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and this one is, uh, so that's Unilock brand in the foreground, so it's a pretty smooth paper surface. Um, but it is, it is stamped concrete, the, I'm sorry, stamped asphalt, stamped concrete for the crosswalk. And, you know, there's, there's benefits both ways, you can do really nice pavers, they do sometimes, you know, uplift. Um, or you can do asphalt, either way, you're doing some type of maintenance, either way, you're doing maintenance. So you're probably repainting or or re-stripping or re-striping.
Advantages to the, I already forgot what you called it, but the gray stuff. Are there, like, is that, is that just a design choice, or or is it an actual benefit of some kind?
There's some benefits, so that's a permeable paper, and then it pours asphalt on the joint lines, the darker lines, so it does allow water to go down. Um, not all of them do that, because it's a a transit route or a a truck route. There's, they are, yeah, they cost more, absolutely, yep. Oh, some of the ones coming up, they're quite, quite pricey, yeah. Uh, but it's an aesthetic, I mean, it goes back to an announcement, you wouldn't do this at every intersection either, I think you'd be at a key intersection, that type of thing. Um, same thing, so that's, that's just an example of, you know, um, using a hair and bone style for. The brick to announce a a key intersection.
I like the brick. You know, like, like how we have, um, what did we do? Is it just crosswalks near the library that are brick? You know what, is it just the crosswalk?
Yes, crosswalk, that's part of the UDO that we had.
Yeah, I like that look.
Yeah. I think these have to be maintained and they're expensive to me.
That's not actual brick, is it?
It's actual brick.
Well, the, can, but you could use stamped concrete to get the same.
You can, yep. Yeah, uh, you you will, it will have to be resurfaced or repainted, but just like you have to, you have to maintain no matter what. The PCB just noted, they like the distinction between what is a a typical road and this, these intersections. And then we just talked about this, again, it wouldn't be at every intersection or every street, I think you would do it a predominant or a dominant uh intersection, that type of thing. Alright, so. A roundabout.
So I do like the use of roundabouts, like, like in front of the library, I I wish we had. More roundabouts.
This one's pretty large, I don't know that it would be at this scale. Yeah, yeah. They're tricky.
We're not ready for two lanes.
Yeah, the one over here.
It's kinda, yeah, but every month, once in a while, it's a right only, it's not a true two lane with. This is, see, look at this, this is two lanes all the way around.
This one's dangerous.
Hillsborough Street had a bit of problem.
Yes, they did.
They had to re-engineer it a couple of times.
Why?
One in Raleigh.
Every time.
Cause I was just down there the other day.
Oh, it's better now, it was an issue for a while. I I think we like.
Yeah, I've seen that.
I like roundabouts.
It's a thing, uh.
Trying driving and driving Ireland or England for a while.
They are safer, um, the accidents are are less severe. It is, it is, and this was something that the PCB noted, as a pedestrian, roundabouts can be a bit trickier, because there isn't a dedicated stop.
Yeah.
Um, so you do have to wait for a gap in traffic sometimes, so that's a fair, that's a fair criticism.
But for the smaller roundabouts, the crosswalk to get across as a pedestrian is easier.
Yes, is, yeah.
I was also gonna mention with roundabouts is supposedly better for the environment, because you don't, you don't have a bunch of cars at a stoplight idling.
Sure.
And really see everybody's flowing. Yeah.
So this one is a more built out um intersection improvement, so a pretty standard intersection, it's concrete. Uh, with some banding for the pedestrian, crosswalks, and then the bump outs themselves are are, I would argue, over engineered. Um, they're a bit much, I don't know that I like the ameby form, um.
Yeah.
But in ter- but in terms of like a statement, when you're in this crosswalk, it's, it's, it's very effective, I mean, it feels like a coordinated design. Um, I like to compromise the concrete, I I always think concrete looks very clean. Um, and then the the real dramatic statement with the crosswalk, I think is nice.
You could have events in this space as well.
The middle of the.
Right, because it's a designated, you know, has boundaries and so forth. Lot of parties on town hall.
Like a dance contest.
Flash mob.
In the heights.
No, I mean, but, I mean, think about multiple uses sometimes with the.
Basketball.
Events and such.
I I do like the stormwater, um, I've been some aside, maybe not so many. And I like the, I guess those are Bs or something, I would love to see some Ms, our stylized M logo.
Yeah.
Somewhere within these things, uh, there's one town that has it right in the middle of an intersection.
Yeah, I like those.
So that would be, that would be a statement.
I've seen them, you're talking like right here, it's this big, they're pretty sharp.
We don't wanna get into the private, they'll say like you gotta pay for it.
The M could be for anything, yeah, who knows what it stood for, uh, okay, I've, but yeah, that would be something where you would be paying.
See, see, that's the thing I was thinking.
This one, just starting to get into the discussion about, you know, more bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes, what types of bike lanes are appropriate. So when we get into the street typology, we'll have, we'll have a couple of examples of how you accommodate uh bikes on 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 road. I mean, I think that's something we wanna explore.
Why is it green? I've never seen green, what does that signify?
Yeah, that's interesting, you, um, that isn't here, that's very prominent in the Midwest, it's a, it's a, uh, it's how they denote it when it's at a cross. So that's a biker's crossing lane for another road, so that we're like at an intersection right now.
That's kinda nice, though, if you're in a car coming up, you can, you can see that there's the potential that a bike could be coming through there.
Yeah, they're hard, they are hard to miss, they fire burn these in, I mean, they're, the way they get placed, it's, they're, they're very effective. Um, and this has a shoulder, so there's a couple of different ways to do this, you can do a dedicated curb that separates you from, uh, you know, the street. Um, this has, I think these have those barriers, don't they go up the plastic barriers? Yeah, so this has a plastic barrier, we were there during installation, so.
Yeah, the next picture has the.
Oh, yeah, you're right. No, they're like, um, they're like the little plastic ones, so if you hit them with your car, it's not gonna destroy your car, um, but it's, they're loud. Yeah.
Okay, those posts.
So if you wanna see some examples of this, you can go um right off Kerry Parkway on Norwell, near North Kerry Park.
Okay.
They have the green markings and they also have a separated by facility, ballards. Green markings, they're, they're doing that over there, there might be a little experiment they're doing over there or something, but.
Yeah, and PCB noted, they want the divided lane, I mean, they want separation more than just, you know, a shared route or a shared connection.
I think that is important.
I feel like having a, having a bike lane just in a town center area. Or a transit development area is like, I mean. If we're gonna do bike lanes, then I think we should do bike lanes and, you know, extend that out through, because you're not just gonna ride your bike around. Transit oriented development.
Oh, I see, yeah.
I mean, you're gonna wanna ride your bike hopefully over to town hall or over to Park West, and, you know.
McCrimmon Extension as a bike lane.
Other destinations, I mean, that makes sense, um, yeah. That's one of the things, uh, we were just talking about earlier today, is how does the TOD, what different ways can you? Yeah, what different ways can the TOD connect to town center? You know, you don't wanna just have to drive, you could ride a bike, that type of thing.
Yeah, and eventually we'll have that greenway, Saw Mill Creek, whatever it is, that. In the whole theory.
Church Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, so connect it to a greenway.
Yeah, exactly, so the bike lanes internally makes sense, and then once you're leaving, obviously there'd be different ways to to get that routed.
Like that.
Yes, so this is, when when you talk about the greenway, the greenway will be a a bit more, I think, trail designed. But this, when you start to get into the TOD area, it should be a bit more hardscape, dedicated space, separated, vegetation. You know, seating, that type of thing.
Isn't that a sidewalk, though?
No, this is a bike, this is a bike path.
Oh, okay.
Um, well, it's a pet pack, so I mean, you could probably walk it, but it is, it's designed for bikes.
Yeah, maybe walking on one side and biking on the other.
Yeah, yeah, it could very well.
Or biking both ways.
Yeah, that's probably what it, yeah.
Triangle bike way will come on to um airport, I think, so I don't think it's going that high.
Okay, but maybe we can, at least some of the gap.
Talking about the one that's gonna go along forty in parallel.
How close?
So I was saying I like seven best and then five. Six.
Perfect, yeah, I I think those are, that, those would be two really good mixes. Anybody else have thoughts?
I mean, I think they each have their place, depending on what, like, depending on where in town you place them. Like, I think that probably something like seven would be the best option for a transit oriented development area. Because, you know, I, like the other, the street where you had, where they have the green thing on five, that's more like a tree line lane. Where there's a driver coming through, and you know, they wanna be able to see that there's gonna be a bike there, I guess that's not really my, my vision of like traffic. In the TOD area.
Yeah, I could see this running almost like the whole spine of the rail, you know, pretty, pretty close. And then this is is more about what it looks like if you get off that trail and you're into the TOD area. I think this is more about how you would be experiencing it as a cyclist, so yeah.
So I was thinking the opposite, that this might be around the edge of the TOD, and then you take a little feeder street to get into the middle.
Yeah, so when I say the rail, yeah, when I say the rail, like, this is, this is probably what's running along. You know, the edge, and as you get close to, eh, think about where maybe the parking would be for the commuter rail, I could see this, this is actually for commuter rail, this is a metro station. Um, so it's very, it's very similar, and then even on the periphery, so if you're coming out along some of the main roads. I think this would be appropriate, but when you're internal in the site, I think it probably looks more like that. Yeah, no, I I agree. Um, parking. Uh, a lot of different ways that we can and will uh treat parking in in the TOD areas. So this is just an example of, you know, a fairly traditional surface parking lot, end caps, um, parking lot islands.
At least there's some landscape.
I like four, so, I like four, it's got trees.
Yeah, progressively, these get, you know, more and more designed. Um, so PCB's thoughts, they like the trees in the islands, it was well lit. Um, you know, it's less dense, it's functional, easy to pull into, that type of thing. Any other thoughts from the council?
I think this is good for park and ride kind of.
Okay. Okay. It might, it might be.
Walmart wouldn't even have the screen.
That's correct. They wouldn't even have that much.
Yeah. Um, I would, I would say the thing I, I probably, the main thing I like on this is the pedestrian. I mean, that, that is such a strong pedestrian access point.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I think that's its only redeeming feature.
I think that's the only variation between one and two.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's interesting that they're one-way lanes, though.
Yeah, cause they're definitely wide enough for two-way traffic.
Yeah, I don't know about.
I don't see many people like adhere to that.
Designed during COVID.
Yes. I mean, it's very straight. This might be a different country now that I'm looking at this. Yeah, look at the, that wouldn't fly here. That car, nope. All right. So, uh, this is, so we've seen this now in a couple of different communities. And the reason they do it is you have more landscaping and wider landscaping on these, you know, kind of the spine, so where you're pulling in for your parking. Uh, but they're not doing end caps. So for snow removal, things like that, it's a lot easier. Obviously not so much of a, an issue um for you. So it's just a different, it's a different way to get landscaping in here, um, but also in a more, you know, feasible or economic way.
But the thing is, I mean, you've been called this landscaping, but the fact is that setting a tree up in the middle of concrete like that is, is very bad for the tree. I mean, those trees are not gonna live long, as long as they would in the forest. They're gonna, you know, they're gonna die. Because there's not, because there's not enough land around them for them to put down root base. So we can acquire in the, the ordinance a certain amount of soil depth. Um, that, uh, trees are able to establish on these parking lot areas, but that's very true. Um, watering can become an issue. Um, salt, I know you don't, don't have enough snow to really be salting very frequently, but that can also be, um, a problem.
I was gonna add, so to Jackie's point, there's, there's this. This circumference is the reason this tree will never grow. Is because that's about as wide as it wants to go. Roots and leaves follow a similar path. Um, that's why these are actually becoming more popular, is they do span out, they do have growth. So you're seeing, like, communities are moving away from tree grates, they're moving to tree pits. You just get more out of a tree's ability to expand. Um, so I mean, there's, there's advantages to this. Um, it's a way to get green, it is a way to offset the heat island effect, those types of things.
And are those SCNs also?
Be enough to.
I don't know what that means.
Uh, stormwater control maintenance.
Oh, 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 I see, I'm sorry. Um.
Those are sunk. Cause I don't see any.
Yeah, this, this could be an inlet and down. So this is definitely taking water. Well, I wonder if that's a recess for the hard line, for the asphalt.
Okay.
Um, cause yeah, there aren't any drain lines.
The Hart Museum here in Raleigh does a fabulous job of incorporating landscaping in their parking lot.
Okay.
That's it, yeah, you're right.
That, and it's all done for, um, stormwater control. The whole, the whole thing, yeah, it's very nice.
So that might be something to make a note of and bring that back too.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is my favorite.
Yeah, and this, so this one has a couple of different, um, a couple of different features. One, they, they've increased the amount and the rhythm of landscaped islands, you know, throughout this entire thing. So they're, they're almost every seven spaces. Um, they do have landscaping, uh, edges all the way through here. So there's, there's a long island, and then it ends at a bay. So you have landscaping down here. Um, and then also, this is a different material. So this water starts to transition into uh, these, um, I mean, it's basically like a sub-basin, a biotension.
And it has your pedestrian.
And it has a strong, yep. Yeah. No, this is very nice. I mean, obviously there's costs associated with this, but the landscaping, this versus, you know, this, very different. Sorry.
Yeah, I was thinking I like them in the order four, three, two, one.
Four, three, two, one.
Yeah, it's like it's the same parking lot, but just got greener and greener and greener.
Has winter turned to spring?
Um, a couple of things that came up, there's the need for lighting. This doesn't have a, a, a safe feel. There's a lot of landscaping and vegetation. So sometimes that screening, although good for parking, can be, um, you know, a, a danger to those that are parking in those facilities. And then, um.
Yeah, you could do it.
No, no, you could, you could. This, this one in particular, yeah, I think.
I see lights around the edges.
There's lights up here. Uh, these are just, these were comments from PZB. There's just a concern. Um, and it's something to consider, and, and, and we would, I mean, we would have lighting requirements and making sure that it is a safe and, and bright space. Um, but also on, on top of that, like this, this was the one that when, when they got to this, this was one that was maybe most appropriate for the commuter rail. So if you're gonna do the commuter stations, parking, you know, let's maybe not do something like this and do something more like, like this, yeah.
What are those circles?
I think those are, I think those are planters. Um, cause I see, there's something of height in this one.
Hmm, yeah. So they like put pansies and petunias in there?
Possibly, yeah.
So might be a lot of maintenance.
See, the thing is, this is really gonna be parking for a railroad station. I mean, I feel like every, I love this. I mean, I wish every parking lot looked like this, obviously, but I think that every, every tree and landscape feature that you put in is one less car, basically, that can go in there. And, you know, I, we, we really need to balance that out because what we don't want is a railway station where it's always full by seven o'clock in the morning and you can't get a train, you know? I've, I've seen that too, in where we used to live. I mean, you couldn't get a space in the, in the lot if you didn't get there by six AM. I had to catch the five oh five train. And if, you know, and I'm just saying that we, we wanna maximize parking based on how many people we anticipate are gonna be riding the train. Or maybe just, or maybe just make the lot bigger depending on how many people are gonna be riding. But I'm saying that, I'm just saying there's a trade-off there that I just wanna recognize.
Yep, and, and.
Parking lot look like this for sure.
We, we've had some, uh, we have different numbers for what the parking lot could or could be, or could or, or might need to be. But it ranges anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty spaces, so.
I would hope some people would come to the train station by bike or by foot.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's gonna be, yeah, I mean, there's gonna be a ton of people living right there. Hopefully, they would ride their bikes or walk, yeah.
Or by bus. I mean, there's, there's a, a couple of different ways that you could get to here, hopefully not just by car.
Yeah.
Good point. This is an example in a more downtown setting, uh, what angular parking could look like. What this image does a disservice to is it is sawtooth. So what I mean by that is it like kinda cuts in and out, the, the curb.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Like that.
It's not common. You don't see it very often. So I just wanna point that out if you've been here before. Um, doesn't have to do that.
So I know, we talked a lot about, um, this kind of parking where you, you have to back out, and they talked about parallel parking. Um, I think you need to accommodate a little bit at all.
Okay.
So that there's something for everybody.
The only, the main, the main thing to, just to keep in mind, angle parking is easy. I mean, it's obviously really easy to pull in. There are safety concerns about how you pull out, just like how you would back out. If you do angular parking like this, it, it does, it does eliminate the possibility for doing, uh, bike lane, uh, on that street in particular, just cause it's, it's a restriction. Um.
So when I was on Hillsborough Street the other day, last week, there's parallel parking. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that they left plenty of space. You know, normally when you, I always look in my side view mirror, before I open the door. But there, they've left enough space between where your car would be and the lane starts, so that you can open your door.
Oh, yeah.
Without worrying about someone, yeah, taking off your door.
And same, same thing for a cyclist. I mean, that's as, that's as important for a cyclist. There's nothing more scary than that.
Right.
Just eat pavement all the time because somebody opened a car door.
Right. So I think that's a way of incorporating parallel parking or one-way.
Leaving some extra.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This fear of the diagonal is a problem because we have so many vans.
Stick out, yeah.
Really hard to see around those.
Now, these are all small cars, uh.
There's no crossovers.
Getting on the Tahoe in one of those.
Yeah.
A nice Tahoe.
There's that building we all don't like.
Have we scheduled a break at all in this session? I'm just.
I was thinking after this, um, there's one more after it.
Yeah, there is one more.
Right, just take a break and then come back, I think.
It really is time for a break.
All right, sorry. Uh, last two images, so just a, just a, a three-story parking deck, pretty, I'd say pretty mundane, straightforward.
Bless you.
He's allergic to parking dais. You're allergic to parking.
Are those allergens?
So this just looks like a generic parking deck too. I would, I would, I would hope to wrap them like behind something or make it look a little different. I don't know. And I couldn't give you an example of what.
I, I, I know exactly what you mean though. Um.
This looks like it's consistent with the building, the same color brick. So that's what they're trying to show is the step down. So if you had a building that was consistent with that facade.
Yeah.
If you have to have it non-rect.
It just doesn't look.
Yeah.
You could eliminate those windows, flatten out the walls and put murals all the way down.
Now, that would be cool.
That would be cool.
I like the natural light.
Yeah, and that, that was.
Deck, does it matter?
Well, some of the comments from PZB, mo- most, pretty much everybody in PZB did not like this, uh, and then thought it was too dark. Um, you know, not very attractive.
Light.
It, I, I've been inside this deck, it is really dark when you're inside.
Where is it?
It's in Lawrence, Kansas.
So, and I think we should not underestimate this whole safety topic too.
Sure, yeah.
I think it's, you know, I think this area could be ripe for young people and older people. And not that we all wanna be safe, but, um, you know, I could see a lot of single people, you know, and then I, I think safety needs to be really important, whether it comes lighting and all this stuff that we're talking about.
Access, even pavement, stuff like that.
Like this, this one to me is, again, it is a parking deck, but I think they've gone, and I, and there's even, there's different images, better examples, but in terms of putting a bit more effort into a parking deck, nicer materials. Well, well-lit, um, stairwell, well-lit inside, I can see all the way in.
Where's that? That looks like one in Durham.
I think that's in Traverse City.
Oh, right. Yeah, I've been there.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure.
So, yeah.
Can we have a parking deck like that?
That would be amazing.
There's a Architectural Digest page.
Not those.
With nine parking garage designs that are works of art.
Well, I know two of those are structurally not sound.
That would be really.
Those are in Chicago. They're not doing well.
And then they have the one that looks like library books.
That one's cool. That's fun.
There's a parking garage in Princeton that's gradually sinking into the ground. You just have to like go under it. So expensive.
The corn, the corncogs in Chicago, they're, they keep having companies come out and assess it.
Is that what that's called? A corn cob?
Solid concrete, yeah. Yeah, they'll park your car there. Um.
So I like this one a lot more. It reminds me of the one right next to the, uh, Durham Bulls ballpark.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. It looks very much like that one.
Yeah. There's some really nice ones in, in Durham. There was a nice one in Wilmington. Uh, I mean, there, there are some. I mean, I know there are parking decks, but they look fantastic. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, but the well-lit, I think that's a great point. I also, it's okay that it has some exposure, uh, but I do think for what you can hide behind a building, you should. I, I think you get a lot out of that.
I think the, the design on this is meant to kinda blend in with that old warehouse district. Look.
Downtown.
Yeah.
And you know, the thing is with the, the weather in North Carolina, you can support a deck like that. It's not, you know, it's not twenty-five degrees below zero. You know, it's okay if there's, if there's exposure. In fact, it's probably nice if there's a cross breeze.
Yeah.
It looks like there's solar on there, which is nice.
Where do you see that?
Yeah, you're right.
Good down there.
But I just wanna reiterate, I think structured parking is key.
Okay.
So, don't worry about the parallel di- diagonal. I want most of our parking to be more like this.
Understood.
Space constraints.
Okay. All right, well, so the next section, streets, gap and sidewalks, sounds like.
Why don't we take a ten-minute break?
That's fine, yeah.
Is ten enough or you want fifteen?
Ten is fine. I just wanted to confirm how long we're supposed to be here tonight, cause the announcement says six to eight.
Typically, we go to nine for our work sessions.
I know. I'm just saying that in the town website, it says six to eight. So I just wanted to understand.
It depends on how much wrap-up you want after this one.
Not a lot. I think we're probably ten or fifteen minutes away from being done. Not, obviously not counting the, the break here, but.
Yep. So, why don't we take ten minutes? Come back at, uh, seven fifty-seven, please. Reconvene?
What?
At seven fifty-seven, we'll bring back to order. Um, I just had one last thing, if I may, about parking, that last.
Yes.
Just in summary, um, I wanna say I'm not really a big fan of the diagonal parking on the roadway. I'd rather have wider sidewalks and rear parking.
Okay.
And structured parking is actually a primary, um, pervious parking lots, if possible. Anything sustainable with, uh, stormwater control maintenance, um, in place would be nice. The more shade and trees, the better. Um, and some s- solar shading options would be nice, but structured parking would be my goal. Cause I know there's some parking lots that are open that have like shade, solar. I didn't see any of that.
Yeah, we didn't put any in that. But that, yeah, there's, that's becoming more and more common. Okay?
So, those were just things I wanted to.
One of the comments I had, so if you have, so, uh, maybe avoiding the diagonal parking, are you open to parallel parking on the street? That takes, that's like half the depth that you're using up, still gets a little bit of, of parking on street, but you're predominantly setting aside that lane for the sidewalk and the landscape and that kind of thing.
Parking really wastes a lot of space that I think we could, would be better used if like restaurants could put tables out on a
Okay.
On a sidewalk area and stuff like that.
Okay.
Can we do both?
You can do both, yeah.
But ideally, if we have like restaurants, seating, a nice wide sidewalk and a bike lane, without any cars to break up that viewpoint.
Okay.
That would be ideal for me. But if we need the parking, we need the parking.
Yeah.
I'd rather have a clean streetscape with trees with no parking on it at all.
Got it, okay.
And anyone else?
So I would tell you, I think you need some kind of parking. I think I think there are folks that are not gonna wanna park in a deck and have to walk somewhere. They wanna pull up and be at a place. I think you need a little bit of both. I think we can have it all. I think we can have this all, by the way.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you're basically dictating what you want the right-of-way width to be. So if you want to accommodate a building, sidewalk, outdoor seating, landscaping, parking, and then a road, you just will program the space to accommodate all those different functions.
So, Nick, I'll go back again to, we put all these restrictions. What is a tag on our side?
That's right. There is a trade-off.
There's a trade-off.
When you start to, I mean, what, it's, it's no different than telling someone how tall a building could be or, um, when you start to program.
At that, or basically they'll say, if you want it, then do a private partnership, public partnership. I'm, I'm, I'm seriously asking, cause we're going to struggle like with the overall downtown here. So I don't want to be another thing that we are putting millions of dollars in joint infrastructure that we could manage both at the same time.
Okay, so, and I understand that. I'm trying to think through different ways to do that. I guess from, from my perspective, for what we're trying to do for this project, mission one is let's develop a concept plan that we all agree is what you want to do. How it gets funded, I mean, that, that's very much driven by.
So, as long as, if you see the McCrimmon Corridor, right?
Mm-hmm.
We made the rules and we left it for the developers to develop it based on the guidance that we did.
Yeah.
If that's the concept, I'm good for the theory. If we are going more deep into it, telling them we'll do a public pilot partnership and like you want to do this and not this, then putting all these restrictions then. I also want to upfront, what's the tag on us if we are doing that?
Okay.
Because that, for me, is more critical in the overall. Because this is only phase one. We have several other things, infrastructure.
I think I understand what you're saying.
I think I understand what you're saying, so it's, this is going to be separate from the town center in that generally what the build market's going to look like, private developers, finance it, pay for it, build it. But earlier about the public-private partnerships and that stuff, we're keeping our ears and eyes open and researching opportunities. Might work, it might be a good reputation to town, but past that, we expect private developers to pay. And then, if it's a public road, the town will maintain it at some point.
And then, and I'll only add, like, with certainty, I promise you, we're, we're not leaving this concept plan or the zoning district phase with a recommendation that this be private, this be public, and this be joint, that, that's not a part of our study. Um, and a lot of this is like down the line, if you do start to actually get this improvement in place, um, my, my recommendation would be privately driven, I mean, that, that should be where it's coming from.
For us, especially if we're a train station and all those things, I'm guessing we have to maintain it ourselves, you know, because it will be the T O D event.
Yeah, but there could also be potential funding in place that isn't, isn't Morrisville, it could be another, um, agency that you're tapping for those types of dollars. But again, separate from this, this is more about if it's going to happen, this is how it should look, how it's going to be funded is, it's, it's a concern, I, I can understand that. But yeah, to Chris's point, I mean, this is, this is privately led, ideally.
Then, then, then I'm making.
Okay.
I don't think of it as restrictions, it's requirements, what they're going to do in order to build by right.
Exactly.
So we're deciding what they can build. We have some minimum standards, um, because we have to build for the future, we got to think ten years out, and that's when commuter rail's coming, so.
I totally get it, because I don't want to get into the rapid progress, we're giving all these things, the guy says, it's too expensive, it's not working for us.
They're still going to say that.
Absolutely, that is, that is, yes, that I can actually assure you, uh, that won't change, and, you know, when, when the time is right, it'll, someone will want to build this, so, I, I think you need to, you need to clearly articulate what your expectations are, and that's what we're, that's what we're going to do here, um, how it's going to get funded and how much someone wants to do it, yeah, we'll get there, alright. Um, I keep looking at my screen, alright, sidewalks, so, this is both sidewalk, streetscapes, we're also going to get some public spaces, pocket parks, that type of thing. So this is just a, a very simple, um, you know, public sidewalk, and then right there on the edge, this is, you know, where a building used to be, and they built out a pocket park, um, a very simple concept, you know, tied into a more urban space. Didn't get a lot of feedback on that, I mean, a couple of people said nice on PCB, didn't get a lot of feedback other than that, though.
Yeah, it's kind of nice. I like the seating, I like flowers, the color, wrought iron.
It depends on where it is, right, it's a nice balance, and they repurposed a space where there, um, possibly was a building, or had, you know, could have been a storm, you know, there's, it's a nice, um, respite for those.
And it's clearly in a place where, I mean, look around it, it's a cityscape, it's in a place where you're not going to find greenery, and you know, even if you sit down on a bench, it's going to be on concrete, so this is like a nice little break for that.
Yeah.
That's a lot, I'd like it even more without that fence.
Like it more without the fence, okay, yeah, that's Chicago's rules, yeah, you're right, though, hey, it would look nicer, for sure.
I think it would lend itself well to, in certain locations in this space, just because you're going to have people like in between classes at Wake Tech, or waiting on a bus, or waiting on a train.
Mm-hmm.
And it'd be a nice place for them to hang out.
Have lunch.
Yeah, have lunch, read a book.
To, you know, it's, I mean, honestly, if we want that, we'd be talking about, I think, more of like a town green with real seating, and I mean, this to me is, I don't know, I, I don't think this is, this is kind of intended for, you know, like, to, to hold like a lot of students, a lot of, you know, people waiting for a bus, like, I feel like this is, I don't know, not that, it, because it just won't hold that many people, I don't know, but.
It's a, it's a pocket park, right, yeah, exactly, it's more open space, there's some opportunities to sit and, and, um, relax, but it's not a big gathering space or anything like that.
Yeah, Dan's point, something like that, I would, you'd have like Adirondack chairs in a circle, like, where people could really sit and be together.
It's passive.
Now I kind of want a circle of Adirondack chairs.
I know, I know, the Adirondack chairs.
So funny, that was, they, we got an opposite comment from PCB at one point, who sits in those chairs? But I think if you put them out there, people do sit in them.
Uh, when I was at N C State last week, there, I noticed there's these, there are pocket parks, and there's just like one Adirondack chair there, and I went and sat down in it, just to relax, so.
At U N C, they have little pocket spaces, and there's hammocks in there, which I think is super cool. I like that.
That will not be me.
I'm not a hammock person, um, alright, so, this next one is, so now we're starting to get into the streetscape, and now try not to, try not to focus too much on the road, although I think that road programming's close to what we talked about, in terms of, you know, that can be parking, that can be a bike lane, two-lane, could have a median, um, but, but really more so the, the streetscape. So you have this, um, private development building, you know, an edge between it, the main sidewalk, landscaping, that's a very wide landscaped bed, it's probably fourteen feet, um, you know, pretty significant.
Yeah, and, and the key is, if you look at that kitchen, right, I want like outside seating to like, with the capability, so that they can expand it out, and that will, the ambience will look much better.
Yeah.
While walking down.
I, I think if, if this were built post-COVID, that, that outdoor, or that landscaping probably would be broken up into more pieces, and there could be some spaces for, for outdoor dining. This is almost too big for a sidewalk and not big enough for outdoor seating, you know what I mean, it's just like right in the middle there. Yeah, exactly.
The parking lot and the weather and like they're trying to set out.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But I think if this was squares, you know, if you had like a square on, a square off, a square on, a square off, you would have more room for stuff like that, for benches, for tables, for restaurants and stuff, and it would still, I mean, that's a very pretty border, like the wideness of it, I think is really nice.
Like Europe, they used to always, restauranters, small, I would, them on a chairs, obviously, like, so handy.
Yeah.
I like how the trees are providing shade, though, that was nice.
Yeah, lots of shade, I mean, these trees are, these will be healthy trees, those are substantial, uh, widths and, and depths for planting beds.
But they're also mature, like, it would take a while for, like, if we, I mean, this would be like kind of the ten-year vision, because when we plant these things, there's going to be no shade, and there's going to be, you know, precious few leaves, and so, I mean, you know, we have to sort of plan growing this for what we eventually want.
Yeah, and these are oaks, so it's probably fifteen-year growth at, at best.
And then, can we put restriction on the plants that they put, as like, should have a certain caliber, not big ones.
Yes.
Not, not small ones, that will take several years, so that, that way.
It's more expensive.
Yeah.
That's fine, but still, you know, you, you get that ambience right away instead of putting like a.
A stick.
Yeah, I, I would say.
Something like this, you know.
And you could do a couple of things, I would do a caliper installation requirement, you should also do tree replacement requirements, what I mean by that is maintenance. A lot of times, once a tree dies, there's no real pressure on people to replace them.
Yeah.
Um, so just stuff to consider, yeah, and then the species that you put in, what goes along a road, there's only certain, certain types of trees that are appropriate for the most part.
I think that we should put that.
Okay. That's a good.
So I like a blend of two and three.
Two and three?
That's kind of what I was envisioning.
I think this is kind of what you just described, yeah.
That's kind of what I was envisioning.
What I, what I like is, this is kind of what we were just talking about before, is there's, yeah, outdoor, outdoor seating, landscaping, gathering space, landscaping, a little bit of parking, and then you could repeat, this, this whole street's not parking, this whole street's not outdoor dining, it's a good, it's a good mix.
This reminds me of the Georgetown area of DC.
Yeah.
I think let's try a little bit downtown.
I like the green and then, you know.
Yeah, I like the outdoor seating.
I like how the, the outdoor seating there, the tables is somehow protected, so at least it makes you feel better when you're right on the street.
And if you look, the, that seating area juts out into the street as far as the parking spaces would be, so you're not sitting there eating your lunch and somebody pulls up next to you.
Correct, yeah, yeah, this is in a bump-out on the street.
That's a good, good one.
Wonder where that is?
Uh, this is, yeah, this is either Oak Park, Park Ridge, um, this is in Chicago.
Oh.
Yep.
So I like this one.
Yeah.
This is a nice one, yeah. You can have it all, exactly, exactly.
You're bringing Chicago to Mars.
I know, I know. Just, just by, just by design components, this is done really well in many places, um, yeah, that's why I'm trying not to say where all these photos are from.
Which is good, I like Chicago.
Yeah.
This to me is the worst of all worlds.
Okay.
I don't like that.
The building is very unappealing.
The lighting is so bad.
You know.
The lighting is bad.
The borders aren't wide enough.
Yeah, angled parking.
Parking is a street too narrow, I think this is, this is not a, I'm not a fan.
Okay.
So what do you think about the, the way the landscaping is, is like in a raised, it's not like really raised, but it's got that concrete border around it, I wonder if that protects the landscaping and helps? No, and it's not high enough for seating, you're right, I, I agree.
So this is a, this is a requirement by a town, so this isn't, yeah, I, I just, I know that, you could do the same, I would do this at, at grade, actually, you'd do it six inches below, so it would take water, like, this won't take water.
Well, and that landscaping that you guys, that a lot of us seem to like, yeah, it doesn't have that curb.
Yep.
But you know, if I was going to do that, like, if we were going to require a curb, I would almost like it to be a more raised bed, and then, like, you know, with, with maybe benches, like where you could sit on a wall, or, you know, make, make it into little benches all the way around, or something like that.
Just, I don't see any benches on this street at all.
Yeah, I don't think it's a street, I don't want to go shop there.
Okay.
I like that.
Yeah, and this one, I think, is a good, this is a good mix, you have nice landscaping at your corners, um, you know, decorative intersection, decorative crosswalks, nice paving patterns, this is now used for outdoor dining.
Where is this?
This is. Unknown, um, but yeah, no, this is a good, don't, no, don't worry about what's going on over here. Secure it, um, but I, I think this is a really good example of, you know, bringing all these elements together. Ha, ha, Dave Perrell, everybody knows Dave Perrell. Um.
But you know, it's, you wouldn't have these, well, maybe what, the angle, you wouldn't have the bump-out like that, that big, without the angled parking.
Yeah, it'd be narrower, for sure, you're, you're correct, yeah.
And if that's where the seating is for the restaurants, honestly, you're right up, you're right up in the car.
You're into the parking, yep.
And so, I wonder if like this is maybe to the point where.
I've seen towns that do that.
Like, is this something where we're, like, if, if we tried to get this look from developers, would we be pricing ourselves out?
All right, we need to have long.
So the question was, would we, if you move this direction, are you starting to price yourself out of the market if you're asking for all these things? Um, yeah, this might have too much, I mean, there could be too much going on in here. Um, I think there's some good elements in here, though, I do think, you know, trying to, you have an opportunity to marry the road, the streetscape, and the building environment kind of all together, um, so it's not piecemealed in, you're doing it as a concerted effort. Um, there's things in here, I wouldn't do angled parking, I think the bollards are a bit overkill, the bollard lighting, um, but there's some nice features in here.
Fire hydrant color is different.
They painted it to look like a person, little person.
That's how you know our region, yeah, that's funny, I think the PCB made that comment.
Yeah, they did.
Um.
It looks like a Lego person.
Yeah, we, so we paint ours, like, my town does that, you could, you can paint your fire hydrant or whatever you want.
Yeah.
They all decorate them differently.
Well, they do that in Marion, North Carolina, of all places, or at least it used to.
It's fun stuff, um.
Just as a little element of whimsy, you know.
Yeah.
Exactly, I like that, uh, but yeah, no, so I think there, there's some, there's some advantages to this. I, uh, comments that came back from PCB, you know, the texture of the sidewalk, it's not flat, it looks like the office, um, building, it looks like there's an office building entrance on a couple of these, it's like down here, I think this is less commercial, there is some office spaces down here, um, but there is a lot of wasted space, so some of this space, I would say, maybe wasn't programmed as well as it could have been, so I, I, I agree with that. Any other thoughts? Um, directional signage was a good one, someone else pointed that out on PCB, wayfinding, directional signage, and so that's, there's a lot of different factors to that, there's wayfinding that gets you to the T O D, and then once you're in the T O D, you need directional signage to kind of move you around, both as a pedestrian, but also as a cyclist, someone driving a car, that type of thing. So, those are good, those are good considerations.
And there's garbage, but no recycling, which.
Garbage, but, oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. This is more what I was picturing, so when we're talking about the spines along, uh, you know, the rail corridor, even along the roads, these are the buffer areas for if you wanted to do, you know, really big walking areas, I think you could start to do different separations, and then same thing with like the bike trails, so I could see something like this being, um, you know, the landscaping and the buffering is an option.
Around the edge of the.
This one worked in Mars.
Yeah, this seems kind of rural.
Rural, okay.
This kind of space.
Okay.
I think that rural would have.
Have a problem with some of this.
Alright, yeah.
What don't we like about this? I don't really like anything about it, to be honest.
Tough one.
I don't like the choice of landscape, but it seems like a huge waste of space, like, do we really need to do something like that, even?
Any other thoughts? Sounds like a no.
That's a hard no to do.
Yeah. Okay.
But I haven't, there are too many trees there.
That's why I'm asking, I don't, I don't get what's so bad about it.
I mean, you don't think that that's.
Well, the trees are good, but.
Trees are lovely, I'm all tree all the time, but, I mean, that's, there's a lot of wasted space there, one thing we are not long on is space.
It's a very small space.
Well, like, these people are walking across the road, that's not, there's not a crosswalk there.
That guy's a rebel.
That is cowboy boots and cowboy hat.
Yeah, so, okay, that's a fair point, I, I think, yeah, there's a lot of landscape, which I thought would, would be a draw, um, but in terms of the use of space, this might not be the best.
Yeah, I mean, like, where's the sidewalk, it's over there.
So there's buildings here, and there's actually a building just right off to the side here, but yeah, that's obviously not.
Like, where would you put outdoor seating?
Well, so this wouldn't necessarily be maybe in the, um, in like the main street, this might be a feeder into the T O D area, it could be along the edge, that type of thing.
Looks like an on-ramp.
Yeah, it does, I don't see this fitting.
That's fair. Uh, and then this was just, again, another one where this building is by design trying to incorporate a lot more outdoor dining, a lot more outdoor seating, and then it's even tied into a much larger, um, you know, taking some of the parking lot space and building out more outdoor seating areas, uh, a lot of different paper changes in terms of color, landscaping, that type of thing.
I'd love to see something like this, like, really close to the train station itself.
Yeah.
With the extra seating, and it's a place to gather.
Yeah, like three or four little restaurants in a row like that, it'd be super cute.
Outdoor eating area.
I thought we were going for edgy.
It feels edgy to me a little bit.
I like this, I think.
It's kind of traditional.
Yeah. And maybe this, maybe it's this space, this building maybe could be, you know, a bit, a bit different, might want to have more height, that kind of thing, but I, I do like the program of space here for the outdoor experience.
Building could be structured, right?
Yeah.
But yeah, this, this isn't like the, the building, the three-story building that I really do envision for our thing, so.
But there's benches, and there's.
Feels like cottage, cottage retail to me, a bit of a town center.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yep.
Good town center.
So maybe this isn't really appropriate, but I do like it.
Yeah, and this is where, this is where I think the B P, uh, B P S, the visual preference of it can be tricky, is, you know, it, pretend like it's not this building, think about how this could be in between two different buildings, or it could be adjacent to a much larger outdoor square, I mean, you could, this would be a nice space, I think if it was a brewery or a restaurant, would do very well, um, I mean, these are, these are very popular spaces right now.
I could agree with that.
Any other comments? Okay, um, so, alright, just to, just to wrap up, there were some places that, uh, we need to review and discuss, so as we get into the next couple of steps, these are places that, I mean, some we know, Grace, uh, Grace Park, Park West, um, some I've never been to, uh, I was hoping to pop over to a couple of these districts, specifically some in Cary and Durham as we go through this process in Raleigh.
What?
We added Burt Dale's on there, but you sent the one for that building in Cary.
What do we call it? Lafayette Square?
Which one was New Rochelle, North Avenue? That went horribly wrong. Is that picture in?
We need a photo of that.
Someone, someone had added that into their, their comments.
I think it's Colorado.
So these were just comments that came in, you know, from the survey that we had sent out. So, you know, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at all these different places. Uh, it'll be helpful for us as we start to kind of, like I said, pull together that typology. You know, what the street could look like, what the buildings might look like, that type of thing. I, I wish. Yeah, that would be fun. Um, and I want to manage expectations too. When we come back with the, the lane use program, um, the kind of concept plans for the TOD, you know, we're not getting into this level of, you know, architectural detail. That's not the, the, the point of this exercise. So it'll be a bit more blocky, you know, it might have some articulation. It'll be very similar to what we did for the TOD East. Um, but you'll see, you'll see at the street level, you know, how connections are gonna be made. But it really starts to come together when we do the, the TOD overlay and you start to require specific elements, you know, what types of uses are appropriate. Those types of things will be important, um, development standards, that type of stuff. But this will all be good, um, input. We already started kind of poking around on some of these. There were, there's some really good ones. The Burke Dale came up from a couple of different groups. So I, I think now people we've talked about, even in some of the stakeholder discussions, that was a place, um, that was mentioned, so. And keep these coming. I mean, if you, based on the discussion that we just went through, if there's, you know, other ideas or places that you're familiar with, I think just start inundating Chris's inbox with ideas and he'll get them to us.
Later on, is there ways to find out if we like Meadowmont, let's say? To know the design standards of Meadowmont so that that's a starting point for us?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Um, yeah, I mean, that could be something. So what'll be tough to know is if their design standards are what drives that final concept. That it could have been like, could have been design guidelines, could have been something the developer just wanted to do, yeah. Um, but that's a good point. I mean, it's stuff that if we can look into, we can look into. Uh, I'll look at Burke Dale just because I'm, I'm interested in, you know, maybe what did drive that. Uh, but yeah, certainly breaking all these down, that would be tough.
Well, I just, I, I've been looking at a lot of communities lately.
I think it's good.
It is a nice community.
So one thing we didn't talk about tonight, and toward the end, uh, planning and zoning brought this up too. I, a ho- use of a hotel. I know we're not talking about.
I meant to bring that up too.
I think that would be important to make sure that, that we can incorporate a hotel on one of these quadrants. Especially because, you know, and, and, well, I mean, because of the cricket field and the tournaments and things we're gonna be bringing to the cricket field. But also, I can envision folks that are here for cricket walking across to the, the west TOD and actually going out to eat there. And, um, so I think there's some synergy there. That I want to make sure that we don't, um, lose sight of.
Well, and proximity to the RDU, RTP, I think we did, we did, we talked about that. Like there are many reasons why a hotel feasibility study, I think would prove that a hotel is a viable use in this location.
They can make great landmark buildings too, where you really.
That's right. It doesn't have to look, I, and I'm not talking about your generic Holiday Inn. Yeah, I'm talking about it needs to look like Burke Dale Village, but it's actually a hotel.
Or the Dylan.
There you go. Yeah, exactly. Um, and no, there's some really neat hotel in, in like downtown spaces, urban spaces that are, are like iconic. I mean, you can, you see them, so that'd be a neat space. Um, okay, no, that was something I meant to bring up before when we were talking about proximity to the RDU. Um, let alone all those people that might be coming in for the different businesses closer, closer to McCrimmins. I mean, there's, this is a good spot, so.
And we'd prefer them not driving around town. If they can get in the one location, get everything they need.
That's a good point.
So I have one last question. I don't know if staff can look back, but I think Park West Village was supposed to be kind of like this, along some of the storefronts, and it didn't end up like this, so.
Yeah, because it doesn't look like that, right? No.
Just wondering if we want to make sure that whatever we do ends up being closer to what we hope for. Park West, I think we missed the mark a little bit. I'm not sure how that happened. I think there is a lot of different things.
Okay.
Those design standards as well.
So there might not have been as much.
So I think that was part of it. So I went on, whatever we can do to make sure we get what we were hoping for in the first place.
We should, are we gonna allow murals in this area?
Oh.
I don't, our, our town doesn't really allow them too much yet, right? We're still working on that program or?
Gonna be building a new zoning district, so.
So let's allow murals.
I've heard a lot of fun, edgy, um, kind of comments, so that would fit in with that. And you know, I mean, I think that makes, that makes a place, like a really cool mural makes a place even more of a destination for wedding pictures, graduation photos, like all the things that bring, you know, bring people into a place as a destination. I just think.
And by a train station, I think they kind of go together. I don't know why I think that, but see it being a good location for murals.
That's the freedom.
It's a freedom town.
Okay, and the last thing, uh, just next steps, where we're going. So we had our PZB workshop, uh, did some recon, reconnaissance work on, uh, or kind of last, last month in September. Um, we've been doing these stakeholder interviews and discussions and we keep kind of connecting with different people. Every time we talk to someone, they recommend we talk to somebody else. We're trying to do as much as we can in the upfront to learn what we can. Um, we are, you know, here today, obviously with the, the town council workshop. There's a few more transit, uh, providers and just talking to some other communities in the region to make sure we're, you know, kind of moving in the right direction with the transit, um, approaches. But after that, in October, November, uh, is when we're gonna push out into the base mapping, planning influences. And then we'll switch gears and get into, uh, into November, this, this typology approach, the land use, the roadway, how we're gonna treat open space, how we're gonna treat, you know, the street cross-sections, that type of stuff. Um, so those are our, our next couple of steps. And then I, in talking to some of the transit providers, uh, NCDOT, we do want to do some follow-ups with them, kind of coming back, just make sure what we're recommending is in line, specifically as it relates to the roadway typologies. I think the rest of this is very much in, in Moore's Phil's purview and, and you don't really need much feedback on. Uh, but just want to make sure we're moving in the right direction. We do have a meeting set up with staff, uh, later this week to talk about the timeline. So this could change. I just, I want that to be clear. Could, could speed up. Um, and certainly as we get into some of the next phases, or the next steps within this phase and phase two, um, it's possible that this timeline changes, but this is what we're planning on as of now.
One thing I'd like to put out for the council's consideration is the idea of having, uh, like one block that's only pedestrians. Or maybe a woo nerf, which is that European concept that the, everything's the same level and pedestrians and bikes and cars going really slowly all share the same space. Um, that came up during early.
South Point?
A bit like South Point. Yeah, I mean, they have that main drag that's no cars, but it feels like a street that you're walking in, very European.
Yeah.
Feeling.
So that. There's some good examples. I mean, it's, you wouldn't know a car could be there until a car drives by you and they go slow. I mean, it's very slow, so. Yeah.
So that's just a thought that would sort of make us a little bit different.
Yeah, that's great.
This was a great job. There were a lot of really good examples here that really helped me visualize what, what it could look like.
Thanks. Good, I appreciate it. And good feedback. I mean, this is helpful for us to, you know, kind of walk into this blind. We get some solid direction from the group and, um, you know, obviously, just like anytime you work with large groups, I'm sure we'll come back with some ideas that aren't quite what you were picturing, but hopefully it's a balance from what we're hearing from everybody. Uh, but you'll, you'll have opportunities along the way. We, we're not gonna just come back with the final drawing and say we're done. There's some good checkpoints. Um, we'll make sure we get materials out to you and give you an opportunity to review before we meet.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Get back.
Yeah, thanks. Chicago, yes.
Does staff have anything else they want to share to wrap this one up?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, our next item is town council roundtable. We didn't get anything, uh, from staff, in advance, but does anyone have anything that they want to bring to us? Five minutes real quick, give it an up or down. We're gonna try to get into that. And I want to encourage people to feel like they can bring thi- things forward because we're getting better at this. So does anyone have anything they want to share?
I had one, but given the time, I don't know whether I could just send everyone a, a summary of it. It's about some additional thing I think we should do for small business recovery.
Well, none of these are gonna ever be thirty minutes. They're five minutes now.
Send us the information.
So why don't you send us the information? We'll try to schedule something.
Okay, let's hear the information.
You have one that you'd like to share? Okay, so, um, thank you. Let's, thank you very much. We're, we're trying, we're gonna be discussing this more. This is the historical, um, roundtable stuff. If we could have the presentation to be about five minutes, any real direct questions? But generally, we want to give an up or down on whether or not we want staff to follow up and do some more work and bring something back to us. That's all we're doing. We're not going really in the weeds at any of these things. It's the goal. Um, it sounds like Steve wants to give us a little socialization before he brings his next one in. Uh, Satish has one he wants to share with us now, so go ahead.
So for me, it's more about, I think, uh, I want to copy what I saw at Wake Med. Um, it's recognizing the staff, not just like, you know, with all departments. You know, we, we have, uh, like, the police and, you know, we recognize them. But things that go on on a daily basis, there are so many local heroes that, you know, we do it. How can we recognize them like, a way that they feel good about themselves? As an annual event, you know, and Omar, during Thanksgiving, we, we call service anniversaries and all those things. But if something happened during the course of the year and it was recommended by their staff to staff, you know, and that could be brought up and vetted and use that as a, you know, an item where it can be, uh, presented or through like whatever the committee is. And recognize them for what they're doing. It's not always the fire. It could be public safety. It could be. It could be finance, uh, anything planning or something that they did. Um, that way, at least, they feel empowered that, okay, our work is getting recognized. And, and also, the same way, I want for the citizens, if any out-of-the-box thing has been done, then, and if it is recommended by a staff, not any one of us, like a staff. For example, um, even though like, you know, Jayshri was there, like she led the effort to, to the holy and all those things. Okay, she, she did her job. But we should also recognize that kind of out-of-the-box thinking. And so that we, the staff basically recognizes that and then give them also the similar kind of thing that these are the volunteer heroes of the town. So it goes both ways, you know, for our staff. What they're doing, it's a peer-to-peer. And for outsiders, I want the staff to basically say, yes, I see that. You know, they went out of the box, you know, to do it. It could be a person who saved someone's life and the police goes in before the police or ambulance went. So why can't that person be recognized? And then the staff goes and says, okay, this is something that as a town, we want to recognize.
So somebody is kind of above and beyond. Did you, who did you reference in the beginning? Did you reference Wake Med?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because Wake Med, when I went there, like they do this annual awards. And, and the first award was given to a person who cleans linen during the COVID time. He was the guy who had to do extra cleaning. And then the people who basically are the front desk people who stopped everyone from getting in the security. And it's not just the doctors. It was like every level of the department that they went deep into it. And when I saw that, I said, I thought, why can't we do something like that?
And probably not department heads. We're talking about, you know. The people that are really doing the work.
The real people who are doing the work, you know?
Okay.
So that's, I, I, you know, why can't we start something like that, such a recognized work?
I have a thumbs up on that.
I think we have done something like that in the past. I've seen some posters.
So the town has in- internal service awards recognitions in which heads or yours, coworkers can submit, um, someone for a recognition and the committee evaluates that and they get recognized employee, um, uh, service awards recognition, which is done once a year, but it's essentially kind of employee to employee. Uh, we have seen situations in which we have seen partners from the communities that have sent an email, whether to town administration or to even, um, supervisors, and they take that information and provide it to, as an, as part of the application so that it can be considered when the committee is looking into that. So is, is the intention here to open it more?
So, so for example, the, the notes, uh, like news and notes, okay, I see like this guy has done something. They, usually Martha puts some notes. Why is it not public to the entire, you know, where does the communication not go? Okay, this person has been recognized for this because I see.
Townwide.
The townwide, you know, town of Cary does that. This person has done this to do that. So why should we just restrict it to our staff, to this one? If they've really done something which has impacted, it should, it should be broadcasted to the, to the people and also like the people when they see, they said, okay, these guys are doing a great job. It's just.
At a minimum, they should be highlighted on social media.
Exactly.
Could be throughout the year, not just that.
So, so that can be throughout the year and like there's nothing, but for the, for the, this one too, like, you know, um, any person, like, you know, any citizen who did it should be throughout the year. And if a staff felt like they have gone over and beyond, then. For us anyway, we have that ability to do that from our end, but I, I feel like.
You want to empower staff.
Empower staff because they are the people, like, for example, they're just giving an example of, like, say Jana, the amount of work that he has done in the cricket, like pitches and all those words. We don't basically take it, things for granted, you know, like, you know, recognizing the work that they have done, you know?
Or even a highlight in our, our, um, what do we call it? The newsletter that we mail out. Highlight a citizen or highlight a staff person for the extra effort.
Exactly. So that way we are just, you know, our town heroes and town staff that, you know, recognize.
People like to be, people like to be recognized. Yeah, I've, um, a lot of times when, you know, we talk about somebody here that's done something special or that, you know, I drop them a thank you note and I've gotten such overwhelmingly positive responses because people, you know, people, people work hard and they often go above and beyond and they don't get recognized for it. And that's a shame. I love this idea, Satish. I'm a thumbs up.
Okay, so that's a thumbs up. Moving forward, please. Anyone else have anything for this evening? Okay, so just to refresh, ideally, if you have a roundtable, um, we haven't really talked about it other than when it's scheduled for, um, at work sessions. But this might be something that we start socializing and do most of the work in advance. This could be something, we have a slot at every meeting, and if it's just a five or 10 minute thing, we can have the ideas coming and flowing and moving.
I would love to streamline the meetings way more before we start talking about tacking on even five or 10 minutes, if I'm honest. I mean, I have to get up so early Wednesday mornings, like it's just not even funny.
Right, understood. So that's a discussion to have later, but. That's it for right now.
This is a good start.
This is a good start. Ideally, if we can get that information to staff on Friday so that they can socialize it, answer any questions that might come up, um, that would be helpful.
Didn't I see an email that had a, an attachment with a template?
Yes. Yeah, so please use the template and you don't have to wait till Friday. You can socialize whenever you want, ones that you want to do at the next work, roundtable opportunity. Okay, any other questions?
And the benefit of being a.
And the benefit of being able to fill out the template and circle it around, it's not just to allow staff opportunity to review it ahead of time, but it also allow your fellow council members to be able to understand and kind of have a bit of, a little bit of an idea of what the roundtable item is so that they can start thinking about it if they have any further questions when the discussion comes about. So you have the, uh, the latest version in front of you of, of the updated roundtables that we have received to this point. So if you have any, any questions on those, just feel free to send it our way.
I have a quick question. Why, why are some of these boxes green?
So the, the, the greens are essentially the ones that are new information or the, especially this ones at the top
Yeah, I got that.
Are the ones that were added in the last version. And the boxes that are highlighted in green are major changes like staff, lead staff that has changed. Especially with the addition of the new Parks and Recreation Director is now highlighted on this question.
Got it. Thank you, Giselle. Perfect.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Thank you for that.
I don't have anything else.
You did a great job. You know, it was a
This was a good meeting. We're getting out a little early.
You take credit for this whole meeting, Giselle.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that look. I'll second.
Motion from Congressman DeGromel, a second from Mayor Porton Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That carries unanimously, seven zero. It's eight forty-three. We are adjourned. Thank you.
That's very heavy card stock.